Everyone, and welcome to the September 19th, 2023 meeting of the Board of Education's Fiscal Management Committee. My name is Lynn Harris, and I am the very proud Chair of this committee. And as before we get started, we will go ahead and introduce my colleagues and others in the room who will be working with us today.
Good morning, Rebecca Samandrosky, District 2.
Good morning, Buenos dias, Grace Rivera, Oven, District 1.
Good morning, Brian Hall, Chief Operating Officer.
Revel Defense Patrick, he him his, I'm but person.
And we will be introducing other members of MCPs staff as they join us at the table. And as we get started, I just want to give, this is our first Fiscal Management Committee meeting of FY '24. And just coming attractions for the committee for the year, we are really focused on using our time in Fiscal Management Committee strategically to ensure that as we move through what will probably be another difficult budget year, there are no surprises, that we are, we are forward focusing and proactively using this, this committee to talk about the ways that we are changing some of our budget communication practices in, in response to some of the stakeholder concerns that arose earlier this year when we were moving through the process of creating and finalizing the FY '24 operating budget. And we will also be looking strategically as we do move through this year to be nimble, and our agenda and our, our work plan may change as events arise, but that's, I think, one of the nice things about this committee is that we can adapt to emergent circumstances to be as strategic as possible with the work that we do here. So our first item of business is our information, is informational, it's our annual Fiscal Management Committee work plan, and as mentioned, this is our, our work plan as of today, but as the year, and as circumstances evolve, it may change, so that we are staying on top of the most pressing issues that can, that confront the system in our fiscal work. So any comments, changes, suggestions, my colleagues, to our draft work plan? And any draft, any changes, comments to the minutes of our last, our July 6th?
Sixth meeting.
2023 meeting?
No.
Okay. So moving on, the first item on our agenda is our annual Category 12 expense reporting. And so I'm going to turn it over, I believe Mr. Riley is joining us at the table. I'll let him introduce himself.
Morning, everyone. Pleasure to be at this first Fiscal Management Committee meeting of the year. So for Cat 12 expenses, this is something that we do twice a year for transparency purposes. These are reports that we send over to the county. This is in addition to our, our monthly financial report that we do. Next slide, please. So it originated, since 2012, we've been doing this. And as you'll see, I'll go through the categories, there's, I mean, I'll go through the items within Category 12, but the two largest expenditures we have are our healthcare expenses, as well as our employee pensions. So next slide is going to show our, what you normally see in our monthly reporting, it's a budget to actual analysis, and I just wanted to go through these items, just to let you know where we stand, this is as of June 30th. This is what you're going to be seeing in the annual comprehensive financial report, but we are going through it now, too, because on September 30th, we're also going to be sending a letter to the county with all the information we're sharing here. So I'm going to work my way up from the bottom on this one. So for risk management, tuition reimbursement, reimbursement and miscellaneous expenses, these are ones that traditionally, you know, we have a budget amount, and then we look at actual, normally, we're pretty close, and that can be seen in these amounts here. We have a variance of point one, negative point two, and a 1.3 negative. The next item, I just want to bring to your attention, non-tax supported grants. So this one, you'll see a positive variance of $17.6 million. That is our, what that represents is a timing difference. So our non-tax supported grants, as you know, some of our grants aren't just limited to fiscal year, right? So some of these grants that we're looking at, the budget actually carries, the county allows us to carry over that budget and that appropriation to the subsequent year. So we're looking at, in FY '23, we had $51.5 million budget, and we spent 33.9 actual. So a lot of this is ESAR funding, too. So what you're going to see is, when we're doing this exercise next year, that might be flipped. You might see a lower budget with more expenditures because, because of that, because of the timing of when ESAR and non-tax supported grants are spent.
So just to clarify, so we're on a July 1 to June 30 fiscal, and you're saying some of the grants that we receive simply aren't, aren't allocated and reported in that way? Maybe it's a January, it's a January 1 to December 31 reporting cycle?
Exactly. Yep, that's correct.
Thank you.
The next line there is retirement. So just to be clear, too, so you know, we have a separate retirement fund, right? And we have separate health funds. What these numbers in Category 12 represent is our MCPs employer contribution to those funds. So that, this, the retirement is pretty much set, there's, there's the employer portion, and then the employee portion. So that one, you can see, the budget was 137.7, and the actual was 137.4, so a minor positive variance there. The next item, Fiscal Insurance Contributions Act, or FICA, that, that totally aligns with our salary. So normally, we can make a good prediction on this, there are some years or some occasions where there's some unexpected amounts, but here, you can see the budget was 135.7, and the actual was 136.4, so a point seven negative variance. The next item going up from the bottom is Retiree Group Insurance, and this is one where our contribution is exactly what we budgeted for, and that's $33.7 million. These are funds that go into our retiree benefit trust, and then ultimately gets reported in the OPEB fund on our ACF, which you'll see in November when we go over the ACF. So the last item there, Active Employee Group Insurance, that one, you'll see, we budgeted 274.4 million, but we actually contributed 288.4, which represents a negative variance of 14 million. If you recall at the last board meeting, we talked about categorical transfers. So that 14 million represents year-end savings that we, that we found at the end of the year, and we thought an appropriate place would be to put that would be in our Active Employee Group Insurance Trust, which, as we, as we've been saying for the last couple of years now, we're still kind of trying to make up from COVID, as well as the increase in health insurance. In any given year, we do budget for increased health rates, but what happens is sometimes those, the claims and the rates, in this case, it's the claims, are higher than what we budgeted for. So we felt it was important to put $14 million additional in that. So I just want to be clear, when I talk about year-end savings, and at the same time, I wanted to dispel some myths and misrepresentations that I've seen out there. When we talk about year-end savings, these are budgetary savings. So in other words, we are not taking that 14 million from, let's say, Category 3, which was in the categorical transfer. When we move money at year end, it's really just after the fact, after all the expenses are taken care of. So in other words, in Category 3, did we ever stop recruiting or hiring teachers? Absolutely not. In Category 3, did we ever take money away from teachers, or take money away from the funds to do so? Absolutely not. Do we budget conservatively in Category 3? Absolutely. This is our biggest budget, and if we ever missed on here, let's say a Category 3 was negative, we'd be missing payrolls, just to give you an example. So not a good outcome for a staff or student. So I just wanted to give you a little background on the categorical transfer process, as well as why we were able to, you know, relocate $14 million from savings into this active group employee trust.
And can I just add, too, as we look at the scope of this, the $14 million, while it might sound like a lot, the, the budgeted for that category was $1.2 billion. And again, we're budgeting that in, you know, February, March, for the following fiscal year, so about 18 months in advance of the close of the fiscal year, and that 14 million would represent less than 1%. So we were more than 99% accurate with our budgeting, and of course, you're never going to get it straight on the head, and that 1%-ish aligns with about the 1% vacancy rate that we had in our instructional category as well.
And just to, you know, clarify for the millions watching, at our August 24th board meeting, there was a consent agenda item that was the annual end of fiscal year categorical summary and transfer report, something that we get every year. And there was a commentator in Montgomery County who took that, that consent agenda item and wrote a piece about it that tried to assert that MCPs really isn't competent to manage our budget. And I think, you know, one of the things that we want to talk about today, now a little bit, and then later, when we're talking about our uppering budget, you know, FY, as we're moving into FY '25, looking at what it means to have end-of-year categorical transfers in a, in the budget for an organization of our size and complexity, and how it reflects simple standard accounting procedures, and, you know, having money to reallocate among categories at the end of a year, of a fiscal year, is A, not unusual, and B, not bad. So we'll go into that a little bit more when we get to the operating budget piece, but we did just want to address that, that head-on. Again, it gets to some of the reporting out there that's not completely accurate about the budget work that we do. Questions, colleagues?
I just, no, I just want to follow up with what you said. It's a complicated process, so assumptions can be made very quickly without understanding the complexity of what a budget of this magnitude looks like, and how you do the best you can to do the projections. But like Mr. Hall was saying, it starts 18 months in advance, and unless you have a crystal ball, you really, you know, you do the best you can, but when you put it into the billion of dollars that is, like you said, less than 1%, which is pretty good, by the way, I think. I'm not a mathematician, this is not my area, but that still looks good to me. Explain to me a little bit about the miscellaneous line, and if you can just give me, and for the audience, like, an example of what would be in the miscellaneous line?
Yeah, so miscellaneous is four or five small ticket items, but one of the items is our McCap-McBoa, they have the opportunity to do a PTO, or paid time off cash out, leave cash out, and that's what that represents, the budget. So what was cashed out was more than what was budgeted.
I'm sorry, that means nothing to me. What was?
Yeah, I've been using PTO a lot, because...
Like, just, just tell us what they mean, because people in the audience are frightened.
So leave, so during negotiations, one of the benefits that was negotiated was to be able to convert some leave that people build up over time for a cash, a cash equivalent or cash paid out, which they get taxed on when they receive that, and there's a budget line item for that. So more people took advantage of that during this year. That's one of the items, there's a few other small items in there.
Oh, got you. So this is something for principals?
Anybody within, any McCap or McBoa member.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so instead of taking leave, we gave them the opportunity to take cash, and then they pay taxes on that?
Correct, yeah, and there's limitations there, you know, you have to be here a certain number of years, and it's limited to the number of days. But I believe we increased that, the number of days available, which could have, could have accounted for that.
And that's part of the negotiations that we have?
Correct, yep. So one of the things, as we develop next year's budget, we'll look at that specific line, and then correct as, as needed.
Good. Okay. All right. So moving on to the next item four on our agenda, and that is looking at some of our internal auditing work. And first thing, we have Ms. MJ Bergstrasser, who is going to give us an update on our independent activity fund data, and I just, you know, want to remind people that a year ago, I think in September of 2022, we did a very deep and dive into IAF in general, what it is, where those funds come from, who in your school is the person who should be tracking and assisting with income and outflow, and the purposes for which that money can be used. So I would reference that for anybody who wants a deeper dive, but that, all that information is still available, and was very, very helpful. I still hear from people who took that presentation and have used it to figure out what, how the money in their IAF can be used to support students, so thank you.
Great, thank you. So again, my name's MJ Bergstrasser, Supervisor of Internal Audit. So today, I'm going to be presenting to you the annual FY '23 data report and the FY ' '24 internal audit work plan. I will review the responsibilities of my office, the types of audits we conduct, the financial data of all the schools, as well as compare receipts and dispersments of the high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, and also look at receipts and dispersments, total cash, the CIF balances at all the high schools and middle schools. I also go over some of the audit findings, the most common findings we see, and how many of those were repeats. So first slide. So the types of audits that we conduct, so variety, the most prevalent are the independent activity funds, which is the IAF at the schools. So elementary schools, we do every three years, middle schools, we do every 18 months, high schools, every year. FY '24 schedule has, includes 108 schools, and that's also 32 new principals. So we have a lot of new principals every year, the last two years seems to be more than usual. We try to get out and do an audit during that first year. What we've been doing the last couple of weeks is I've been going out and meeting with principals that maybe just had an audit, and so we really don't have enough data to look at to do a full audit. So I just kind of go out and have a discussion with them about what the audit findings were, what the prior principal had in their action plan, and how I can help them, you know, kind of understand where they're at, and then we'll put them back in the rotation. We also look at the CIF, we've moved that to a three-year cycle now, because for the last three years, we have had no findings, no problems with that audit, so we've decided that that could be on a three-year cycle. But as of June 30th, 2023, sorry, that says 24, we had 202 schools out of the 211 investing in the CIF. Also, the balance in the CIF as of June 30, 2023, was approximately 11 million, and the interest rate has now risen to 3.28%.
And could you just give a quick overview of what the CIF is?
The CIF is the Centralized Investment Fund. We have it with Sandy Spring Bank, and every school has the ability to take excess funds from their checking account, just like you would with your personal money, and move it into the CIF for the, for savings. So it's still part of their IAF money, we're just housing it in a different place. So we're encouraging them, about a year ago, the interest rate was 0.25%, and now it's 3.28. So that is a way for the schools to generate money to be able to use back with the students, and they can get that money back from Sandy Springs within two days. So it's a very quick turnaround process. So we are encouraging everyone to just, you know, look at your checking account every month, what do we have that we might not be using, maybe we've been collecting for a very large field trip, but we don't have to pay the bill for another month or two. Put the money in the savings account, and then see where it is. So it's really just a way for them to be generating money. And when we get to that, you'll see how much money certain schools do have accumulated over the many, many years.
Who oversees that, that process?
So we have a committee, a CIF committee, that oversees it, and it's in the Controller's office, we have people on the board that take care of it. The other audit that we do is I go and do a Transportation Depot audit. I look at all six transportation depots and make sure that the inventories are correct, and, and the validation of the stock is accurate. Another one is I do the Cell Tower revenue, which is money that gets split three different ways, and then so it goes, it's a sharing formula, so I make sure that it got dispersed, the schools got their money, and the schools that have to disperse it to their cluster schools, that they did that.
And can you just review, again, what that formula is for, for schools that, in clusters that do have cell tower revenue?
So it gets split three ways. So one-third stays with the, you know, real estate management, and then the other parts go to the schools, and we have six schools that get two dispersments. So they keep one, and then the other dispersment, they disperse that to their cluster schools. And then we have other schools that just get part of the one-third. And not every school has a CIF, I mean, a cell tower.
So one-third of that revenue stays at the school on who it's, whose property the tower is located?
Yeah.
And then that a third is, is then equally allocated to the other schools in the cluster?
In the cluster. Somewhat, I mean, there are some little tweaks in the formula, depending, every once in a while, one school will get a little bit less, but typically, it's an equal distribution.
How many schools?
It is in the, I don't know off the top of my head, but I do have it in here. Give me one second. I can get back to the, let you know how many schools, because it is in here, but I didn't have it in the slide, but I can add that. I also look at student parking with just, every high school has student parking, and so we just do an audit of the parking passes. It's just a reconciliation, you know, they, they order X amount of parking passes to be sold at a certain amount, they return the unsold ones to my office, and then we do a reconciliation. I do payroll audits, yes.
Follow up on that. So in your student park, and I know the student parking permit, that's an annual, that's done annually, is there, does that process allow for sort of a, of an ongoing overtime look at utilization of those spaces, so we can identify schools where there's, where supply exceeds demand, or demand exceeds supply?
We do, we only do a reconciliation in our department.
Okay.
Basically, you know, you have certain ones, they have a different price, and we just want to reconcile that. We have accountability for all of the tickets and all the money.
Okay.
But we don't look at school spaces and how that's utilized.
A question on that, so when you say they all have different prices, so each school decides how much they can...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, so we have various types, so...
What is clarified?
We have semester, so you can get first semester and second semester, and there's 37.50 plus the processing fee. And then we have full year, so you can just get one. So some schools want to just do full year, some want to offer semesters, and then some do seasonal. So if I play football, but I don't need a parking pass in the spring or the winter, I don't have to get one. So we have three different sets at three different prices, depending on what the school wants to do. And everybody's school, every school makes their own decision.
But the baseline is 37.50?
The, the fee for the ticket, the parking passes is the same for every school. Every semester ticket is the same, every full year is the same, and every season is the same. And we, we do allow schools, if you have someone that comes in mid-semester, you know, not everyone gets their driver's license at the same time, so we have the flexibility of splitting the cost of a semester. So there is flexibility there, and so they just have to account for that in their And so they just have to account for that in their information that they give to us for the reconciliation.
And who in a school is the point person for that, the transportation? Is it the business?
It varies. Sometimes it's the security person, sometimes it's the school business administrator. It really depends on how it runs. But it, you know, it's a process. They can apply for it, but then they have to fill out the form and show that they qualify. And every school has different, depending on how many parking passes. Some are very limited.
Right. And I guess my question, my early question of who oversees that, like the CIF funds and so on? I guess my question was, I know you have a committee, but that committee doesn't decide if South Lake Elementary is going to put so much money. The school decides, right?
That is the principal and their financial agent.
Okay. So because you guys, you're the guru on how money should be handled, I guess my question is who, because it seems like a lot of, some of the high schools, the parking space thing, that's a lot of spaces, I would assume, right?
It varies. For some schools, it is, and some schools, it's not.
So I love my security people, but I don't know if they would be the best people to be handling the overlook of the finances of, you know, so I'm just wondering, in your expertise, who'd be the best person at a school to handle the finances of money coming in and money going out?
That would be the financial agent. So at an elementary school, it goes to the admin secretary, who wears a lot of hats at an elementary school. A lot of hats. And then in a middle school, we have a school financial specialist that will deal with the finances. And in a high school, we have a school financial specialist and a school business administrator, and they work as a team to do that.
And I remember last year, we had this conversation, and last year, the answer was no. But this year, do, are all of our high schools staffed this year with both a finance specialist and a business manager?
All high schools have a school financial specialist and a school business administrator.
They do that, because last year, I know they didn't. So, I know we had some schools last year that didn't have both.
We may have had some vacancies.
Yeah, but those have all been filled.
As far as I know, yes. We had one that left the school, but I'm pretty positive they got a new person already.
Okay, all right.
So we do payroll audits, and so we, you know, we look at four pay periods and try to make sure that everything is being reported correctly, that leave is being reported, people are putting in their timesheets, signing everything. And then if we find errors, it's usually just, you know, easy mistakes, whatever, then we have them do a PAX correction. We were doing cafeteria audits, we're going to try to get back to that, but a lot of the cafeterias are no longer collecting cash, so that risk is really much, much less than it was a few years ago. And then we've added the JP Morgan purchase card audits to central offices and departments. So we're looking at, are they using the card correctly? Are they reviewing it online? Are they approving it online? Are their transactions, you know, appropriate? We do the JP Morgan during a regular school audit, but now we've broadened that out to the offices and the departments. Next slide. So again, some of our responsibility is, is we get and we do investigation from supervisory channels, and in FY23, we did not get any requests for those types of investigations. We also have our anonymous hotline tip that's taken care from Lighthouse is the vendor that we use for that. And last year, we got 13 complaints, which was far less than the year before.
And just to give you an idea, what was the nature of that?
Some of them are as little, you know, this child should not be going to this school.
Oh, non-financial complaints?
Oh, men, most of them are non-financial. Most of them are, you know, we got a few from, about some principals, but also, but I don't, hardly any for financial. So we, I work with the compliance office, and we work together to handle them. But a lot of it is just, you know, this child shouldn't be going to that school, or, you know, this coach just took over and, you know, they were arrested in 2007. But, you know, it comes in, so we, we look into every single one. We make sure that, I make sure that it gets to who needs to look at it, and that we have a conclusion. I manage the external audit contract that reviews the MCPS financial statements. I work with the auditors from Maryland State Department of Education and also the Maryland Office of Legislative Audits. We answer phone calls and emails every day, you know, and people always are like, I'm sorry to bother you. I'm like, we don't mind that we're here. We'd rather you ask the question and get the right answer, and that's what we want. I consult with trainings for school finance, our school funds online, which is SFO, that's the accounting program that we run at schools, and school cash online, which is SCO, which is the online payment system that we have had now for a full year up and running. I work on the annual financial report. I do all the spreadsheets, and that goes into the annual comprehensive financial report. And then I take every school, and we have to roll them into the new fiscal year. So that's what, pretty much during the month of July, our team is working on.
Yeah, I know you do audits for each of the schools. Do you do audits for all of the programs as well? And, I mean, if they're run separately in any way, including things like the education foundation?
Yes, we, we can, we can audit anything we would like. We've actually been asked to look into that audit.
I mean, does they do that annually?
No. So those would be supervisory channel requests. So our main focus has always been the schools, but now we are broadening out to look at more departments and offices. So that's our, in our work plan, to kind of get into more of that. But with a limited staff, we can only do so much.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I'm on the board of the Ed Foundation, and I thought we didn't, they, I thought MCPS did an audit of them every year.
That's the external auditors.
Okay.
That's part of their audit, and they look at certain things, and then my department would look at other aspects, more like maybe their processes.
Oh.
So investigations, escalation policy, basically, oh, next slide, I'm sorry. Schools or office may request an audit due to any financial or payroll concerns, and so if they have that, we'll come in and look at that. We conduct, we do the audit and report the findings. If we find something, we will report it to the Department of Compliance Investigation if we feel it needs to be going into more depth. I'm happy to say that we've not had any of that at the schools for the past several, several years, which is good. And then everything would be reported to the superintendent. Next slide. This slide, we're going to compare the high school receipts and dispersments. It's a little small, but this is the high schools, so you can see that the green is the receipts, and the pink-ish peach is the dispersments. And you can kind of see, you know, we have some schools, you know, spend more, some schools receive more, and obviously, you can see, you know, the various activity from one school to another. That kind of just gives you an idea of what the schools have. And then the next slide would be the middle schools. The same information. Again, that, the green is the money that they received, and the peach is the money that they dispersed throughout FY23. So you can see some schools have a lot more activity than others.
If they're dispersing more than they're receiving, is that because they are raising money elsewhere?
It all depends. Sometimes because things split, they have to pay for things in advance. If, sometimes a school does like a big trip to New York, they may be putting the money out now, but they haven't started charging the students. So it could span over two fiscal years.
Got it.
They could have ended the year with a large amount of accounts payable that they didn't pay, and then in July, they paid them. So there's all different factors why. And next slide. This just tells you the receipts and dispersments for all schools. So you can see, high schools receive over 15 million and dispersed about 14,862. Middle schools received pretty much equal, about 3,000, 3,015, and then they spent 3,048. And elementary schools, again, are fairly consistent, 2,575 and was received, and 2, 352 was dispersed. And then the special schools are very, they, they don't really receive much, and so they received 49,719 and spent 64,595.
This, all of the schools are not given the exact same amount of money, is that correct?
This is all their independent activity fund money. This is none of their budgeted allocated money.
So I guess, but what I'm asking, so this, the money is used for things like band and, and trips, field trips?
Athletics, field trips.
But they don't, aren't, they, the schools are not assigned money evenly, is that correct? In other words, we talk about, some schools have much higher poverty levels, so they need to be able to support more of the activities themselves. And it's been my understanding that MCPS distributes funds for these type of activity funds based on need as opposed to an equal amount for each school.
That would be more of their budgeted funds. These, these are funds in independent activity accounts that they've raised on their own or gotten donations for, or have a foundation or a booster club. It has not, it's not the money that MCPS gives them for special activities, like their instructional material funds or their special ed money.
So I thought that's, that's why some schools have more field trips than others, is because of these funds.
It is these funds, but these funds do not come from MCPS. These funds are raised by the school.
And if you have a school that has an OPTA and is not raising any money, what does MCPS do to?
Out of luck.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, and I would hope not, that, I've always been told that's not true, but.
They do the best they can, but as we see, and I see it at all the schools, there are schools that can do far more than other schools.
Why do we not budget in our, why do we not put money in our budget to compensate and even that out?
So that is something that, historically, we have not done that. That is something that we're looking at as far as how we can more equitably distribute cellphone tower money or operating budget money. So that's something that we'll be looking at.
I'm just, this is my first year in 10 years, maybe nine, being on the Fiscal Management Committee, and, you know, every year, I ask about putting in extra money into the budget for, to compensate for schools that can't raise money on their own, and I really feel like I've always been told that we do that, and I just am a little disturbed by the fact that we're not doing that. So that's something we need to make sure that we do this budget season.
Yeah, and I, just to get to that, so when, could we go back a couple of slides to see, I think it was most pronounced looking at the high schools?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, to Mrs. Madraski's point, I think when we look at the variance here, I think really one of the things that we want to do when we're moving into the operating budget season is look at sort of a foundational amount that we want to make sure every school receives, look at trends over time, and then make sure we're budgeting for schools that don't hit that $800,000 mark or whatever it is, that we are supplementing into, I don't know.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
If it, we could, if we go into an IAF or a separate fund, but just to make sure that the resources are, it doesn't matter what school you go to, the opportunities that can be generated for you.
Correct.
And I guess we, there'd be a little bit there that gets to enrollment. You know, a school with more students would probably have a little more, but, I mean, you guys are smart, you can figure that all out.
And I did have the answer to your question about the cell tower. 92 schools out of 211 get cell tower money, and that's all in my cell tower report. It's broken down as how much each school gets. And again, we have schools that get much more than others, and that's also due because they might have five, a lot of land, and they might have several cell towers on their property. So if we want to go forward to a couple of slides, so the current process, the school audit reports include the findings and recommendations, and will indicate if there are repeat findings. The school has 30 days to reply with an action plan. They're to meet with their director to go over the action plan. What I've been doing is if we have a school that has a lot of findings, a lot of repeats, I'll invite the director to come to the exit conference. If they cannot make the exit conference, then we meet separately to help that school develop a strong action plan. So we really want to be able to just, not just do an audit and say, here's the findings, but we want to be able to give them support and help them to try to figure out how they can make the corrections. Because, you know, some of them are internal control weaknesses, and we need to make sure that that gets strengthened. Once they do the action plan, that can then go to the board, and it will get posted on the school website and the board website. And again, like I said, we, we will come back to an elementary school before the three years are up if we have issues. So we try to, and again, that goes into adding more work to my team, but I think it's an important thing to do, and not just leave them out there.
And remind me, M.J., that when you have a new person, so an elementary school has a new admin secretary, or a middle school has a new finance specialist, there's training, even if they're, say, in, you know, they just had their audit last year, and now they have a new person. You come in and support them.
We only come in when we have a new principal. We do offer training, and we are starting a new, with the school finance office, a new onboarding. So we'll actually have our first training on Friday, I believe, and just getting the new people in there, and not just the IAF. We're going to have people working with the hub and giving them payroll training and the accounting program. So all kinds of things for a new person. And the goal is that, it's a lot, it's a big job, but hopefully, they walk out of some of these trains with at least some resources, some contacts. And so we do offer a lot more training, but we are trying to do an onboarding to get these new people some support, because they, they do need it.
So my question for the principals that were, last year, they were all trained on this, and they're, and when they go to training, they go to training with their team, like the, the admin secretary, or if it's a middle school, they have a finance person. Do they do it together, or do the principals go by themselves?
Both.
Okay.
So they have to go to part one. I also do a presentation to principal interns, and now to new principals. So I've been coming and presenting to the new principals PLC, the finance part, and giving them a lot of handouts, and they get that when they go to the trains. A lot of them will come with their finance team, but not always.
Wouldn't that be a good thing?
It would be, but again, like in elementary school, having the admin secretary and the principal out, you know, that may leave the office.
How long's the training?
Four hours.
Okay.
I mean, it's something that we can think that, you know, suggest, and a lot of them do it, and I agree, I think it's a good thing, because then they're together, and they're both hearing the same thing.
At the same time, yeah.
Is the main thing. The next slide is going to talk about the most common repeat findings. Again, procurement processes is always a repeat, but the reason it is, is because it covers four or five different areas. It's items not being pre-approved, then also incorporates the JP Morgan process, that they may not be reviewing it timely or approving it in the online system. It also might be, they didn't have adequate documentation. Maybe they had a quote instead of the actual invoice. Maybe the document wasn't stamped paid, which is another internal control, or the packing slip or invoice was not marked received. We want schools marking things received, so we know it's okay to pay. So that's why it's always the biggest finding, because it does cover a large amount. The next is cash handling, which we have seen a decrease in now that schools are using school cash online, and we're push, push, pushing it again this year. So we're hoping to get much more, the parents don't need a PIN anymore, so it's a much easier process to register and attach your students, and it's just an easy streamlined way to pay, especially, you know, we have people that obviously don't want to use a credit card. We take e-check. So we're really trying to get it out there and have the principals really kind of advertise it and push it to everyone. The information is in all languages, so that's not a barrier.
I, I want to talk a little bit to this point from the schools that I work with in, in the community that I, that I work with. Although I think it's great for the system to make it easier, it's not always easier for the community. And one of the biggest barriers, and I have actually parents who don't even send their kids on field trips, is because of the cumbersome process to pay through, you know, through an app and so on. Because a lot of, at least in the community that I work with, they have those paying phones. those paying phones, so they can even, because you have to pay to download apps, and access to, to the internet is a huge issue. And I know we're trying to discourage people from using cash, even for lunches and so on, but I just, I want us to be cumbersome, that there's still communities out there that that's the only way that they do transactions is through cash.
Yes, and all the schools have been told that we still take cash and checks, absolutely. We, we do do that. And then the, there's no cost to get the app, it's just a link and to sign up, and we have tried to make it, last year it was a lot of work with the PIN and people forgetting the PIN or not having the PIN. So that is now not a factor. So as long as they have an MCPS email on file, they will get an automatic notice, but we certainly understand that there are people that just.
Yeah, because I know we had, I had a lot of complaints from Odessa Shannon, where parents were trying to pay in cash and they were told no, that they had to go through, through this. And we also have, unfortunately, a group of parents who even, even getting the app, like some of them have a hard time reading and writing and doing it. So to me, it's kind of like an equity issue as well. I know it's a lot better for, for us and for, you know, to keeping better track of it, but I still think that as part of the training that you do with the new principals or the new business secretaries, that we need to be cumbersome, that there are some communities that still, and also sometimes they don't trust those, those cards, and, oh, they don't have a credit card because they cannot pay, you know, they, their life is all in cash.
And we understand that, and no school should ever say that we don't take cash.
Okay.
And if that ever happens, you know, you can reach out to us, and we'll have a.
I will.
A conversation.
Okay. Thank you.
Lightly, sure.
So the next slide just goes into some of the audits, so these are the elementary school audits that we did. As you can see, there's a variety of the ones we did, and what the findings were and the repeats. So out of the 105 audits we did, you can do the next slide. So these are the middle school audits with the findings.
So anybody that's got a red line had findings that were?
The red line is the number of findings, and the blue line is the number of those findings that were repeats.
Hmm.
And the ones that are blank had no findings. So the next, the next slide kind of pulls it to, that's the high schools. Again, we do more elementary schools and middle schools than we do the high schools because we only have 25, and as you can see, most of the high schools were fairly good, and we do have two that were not.
Yeah.
And so we will be working with them a lot this year to help them. Now, the one school has two brand-new people, so we're hoping that that will get resolved. But yeah, that was a lot on that one. So basically, next slide. So of the audits, we did 105 audits, 29 had zero findings. Of those 29, we had 17 that had two or more no findings in a row, which is very good, which means usually, that means that the finance team has been there, they work well together, they work well with the principal, and things are, are really running smoothly. So then we had 38 of the 105 that had one to three findings. We had 31 that had four to seven findings, and we had seven that had eight or more findings. And we, again, we'll be working with them. And then the next slide.
When you say we'll be working with them, what does that mean?
So we'll go out and go over the action plan with them, and just, like, there was a school that I went out every month and worked with the finance team and the principal, and the director was involved, just to, where are we, how are we doing with this, making sure that they understand. What I always try to tell people is, I don't want to just tell you what the rule is, I want you to understand why we want you to do it, because if you understand, you're more likely to do it.
And what was the most common finding that you found? Like, what was, and something that among these schools, was it?
It's usually purchases.
I was going to say, because I know we have some new, is it the new, the new rules that we put in place, or is it like the old rules we had, or to just?
It's, you know, people, you know, they don't, the teachers are anxious, they want to go out and get stuff, and they may ask a principal, and they may say that, you know, fine, but you have to fill out the paperwork, but they think because the principal said that's fine, then they've gone out and bought it, and then, you know.
So it's just not training your financial persons, kind of letting everybody in this, in this school community know the process?
And that is a responsibility that they are to do every year, to address to their staff, here's our handbook, here's our rules, here's the consequences if you don't follow them.
Do we do that when we do the training for new teachers? Do we go over this?
MCPS, I do not believe handles that when they do new trainings, but it is a principal's responsibility every year to address the financial responsibilities.
And do you think it's not a good idea maybe to mention something about it? Because we have a lot new principals, and I know, like, as a new principal, you have a lot on your plate, right? So I don't know.
I mean, if they wanted, I'd be happy to, you know.
Something small to say, these are the protocols, like, before you go in and buy something, even the principal verbally tells you, these are the processes, this is the form, and just give it to the world, I don't know.
I think as a system, we hold the principals responsible for all of the financial matters within the school, and it's their responsibility to really communicate that out to their staff. And if they're not doing that, I think that's an issue that we need to address with the principal, because they really are, at the end of the day, the people who have the final say about the school finances, so that's something we can look at.
Right, and so the last slide is just how I like to finish, the clean as a whistle, sorry, can you go back one? Sorry, my fireworks. So you can see that these are the schools that did not have any findings, which were 29 schools, and the ones with the asterisks are the ones that had no repeat for the last two or more audits. So we just want to address and acknowledge that we do have schools that are doing very, very well. Next slide, if you have any other questions.
Just a quick one for me, something that stuck with me with the anonymous.
Tip line?
Tip line. Was that just financial, is that a tip line just for you guys, just for financial issues? Like, oh, or is that like a general, a general line, and there were 13 complaints altogether for the whole year?
Yes, there were 13 complaints that came through the tip line for anything. So it is an MCPS hotline that anybody, like I said, we've, you know, this student is going to the wrong school, there was somebody that said this person's on disability, and he's running a operation auto shop in Hagerstown, to, you know, there's a variety, so we make sure that it gets to the department that can look into it, but.
And is that a, somebody specific at the department, or it can go to various areas?
So I maintain the tip line, it comes to me and to the Department of Compliance, and then we will decide who needs to look into it.
Got you, okay. And the last thing I'm just going to say on, on my colleague, Mrs. Madraski's point about the allocations of funds to the schools for, for field trips and other things that are part of the enrichment of our children, it is so important, because we do have schools that unfortunately do not have a PTA, or some of them even have an SGA, that I'm finding out, and anything that we can do to level the playing field. I had the gratification of taking a group of kids from Fox Chapel to Imagination Stage, and we have some fifth graders who had never been on a field trip. Now, you also have COVID in there, right? So that's also kind of understandable, but they have been with us since pre-K through fifth grade, and that was their first field trip. But I have a feeling that it was because it was just not something that was very doable, because.
That's what we always talk about, right? Some schools have one field trip or two, five field trips or whatever, based on the expense of the buses and.
And having been part of an incredible PTA during my years as a mom, in schools that were Title I, in schools that were not, you know, it does make a difference. It really does, and it makes a monetary difference that does have a direct effect on the children in that building.
And MCPS does not, allows every student to go on a field trip, whether they can pay or not pay.
Yeah.
So that is not a deterrent. If they cannot pay, then the school will just waive the fee. But again, if they have a large amount, then that school has to figure out how they're going to pay, because the bus still costs the same amount.
Yes.
But every student goes on every field trip unless they opt not to.
So, so anyway, food for thought, I think that it really needs to be looked at, especially now that we're, we're having all these, you know, the, that you raised this audit, and then we are looking into the whole equity thing through a lens of equity. Just to be cumbersome, that we do still have some schools out there that are, you know, now having that, that support, that is such a wonderful support. And, and the PTAs to me are not just, you know, to raise funds, but it's also to have such a, such a good pulse on the community and the parents that are part of that community. It's just, you know, it's more, it's more than just, you know, raising, raising funds. I'm sorry, Mr. Hall, you want to say something?
I was just going to say, I, as we're sitting here, I texted Mr. Riley already saying that we should put something in the budget for the board to vote on this year, and so that will be for you all.
It will definitely be something for us, because otherwise I'll just put it in as an amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So then, moving on, we are now at item five, which is the wrap-up findings from our legislative audit. So every six years, I believe, is the current cycle in Maryland for LEA's school systems to be, have their fiscal management practices reviewed by the state's audit team. We went through that last year, and so Mr. Riley's going to be walking us through the findings from that audit, as well as the school system's response to those findings.
Thanks, Ms. Harris. And as you said, we're at the wrap-up stage. We, we've met in fiscal management, I think, two or three times, at the outset, during the audit, and now we just want to make sure that, that we're addressing all the findings that were in there. I believe attached to the board docs is our actual official response, which shows in detail the corrective action in the PowerPoint I'm going to kind of show you in bullets. So, yeah, because as you mentioned, our, our response and that corrective action was a little more than a year ago, it was in August of '22. Next slide, please. Also, as you mentioned, this is something that's mandated by state law, and it's every six years, so this is the third round of these audits. The second round actually offered some waivers for some of the LEAs, a lot, some of the, not a lot, but some of the smaller LEAs actually took advantage of that waiver. They don't necessarily have the resources to kind of help conduct these audits with the auditors, so, you know, we didn't do that. You know, you know my philosophy, I kind of encourage audits, I, I believe corrective action is, is kind of what gets you in a better place, so. The objective of these audits is to look at how effective we are in accounting and how we are doing safeguarding our assets, so two important things that, and that's some of the reason why the state decided to conduct these audits, and are we making efficient use of our financial resources? Next slide. So these look at processes, and they also look at different areas, mostly within the Office of Finance and almost all within the chief operating officers departments under Ms. Tull. IT is also part of that as well, too. Just a note on IT, when you're looking at the responses and the corrective action, so since this year, the IT, there were six of them, there were six findings, those findings and the corrective action are actually redacted from the public report for obvious reasons. I think the state realized that if they kind of put these weaknesses out there, there are going to be people that are going to try to take advantage of that, and we've seen that throughout the, the LEAs, so. Next slide. I try not to look at audits as, you know, based on the number of recommendations, if it's improvement or not, but as you can see, we did improve from the first one, we went from 19 recommendations, and we're at 13 now. So these are what we're going to kind of walk through now. That September '22, we had a finding in procurement, HR and payroll facilities, other financial controls, information technology, as I mentioned, which we won't discuss today, as well as transportation. Transportation also had an issue with P-card, as, if you recall, from last year, so this was not actually a finding of the legislative audit, but because it was transpiring while they were here, they actually put in a narrative regarding that. So the next slide is actually going to show some of the work we've done with P-card corrective action, and then this work was a combined effort of internal audit, controller's office, procurement. And just to kind of let you guys know, I think it came up in Mrs. Bergstetter's presentation, a lot of the work we do kind of is interrelated, because we do have a school finance support arm of the Office of Finance. So when we were mentioning ways that we can kind of help out the schools, we do manage visiting bookkeeper program, which helps the elementary school, because they do only have their admin secretary as their financial agent. So any areas of CIF, the IAF, the School Funds Online Program, Ms. Rivera, and if you do get somebody that says no cash was, please call me as well, too, because I'll, I'll make sure that gets taken care of.
Mr. Riley, just quickly, so the purchase, P-cards, purchase cards, can you just, just give briefly how they're used in the system and why?
So the P-card, we, we use it for small purchases, and the reason why is because, you know, we have a procurement department, and we, we recommend doing RFPs for large amounts, and we were going to do procurement as well in this meeting, but we're actually going to do that in November, some of the things that we're doing different in procurement. So when I say RFP, one of the things is, is, you know, we've had a $25,000 threshold for doing RFPs, but the state is actually moving from 50 to 100. So it's something that we're going to be bringing up in policy committee and then bringing back here in November. But there's a cost to doing an RFP. I don't, I don't want to say that, I mean, there's definitely benefits, because you're getting the best value and you're making sure that we're holding vendors accountable, right, for giving us the best price and the best value, but there's a cost to that. So when we say P-card, these are recommended for small purchases, and that's, I'm going to go over these corrective actions that we've done with regard to our P-card program. First one being that in addition to mandating training, we also have refresher training as well, too. And if people don't take that, suspension will be immediate, and we have suspended some cards. Usually what happens is the controller's office will kind of make a phone call and kind of give a reminder that you didn't do your training, so that gets rectified before it comes to suspension. But that's one of the things that, we don't want folks saying that, hey, we didn't know, we didn't know the rules, even though, you know, they're out there, and we issued many memos on the topic, but we want to make sure that people don't have that excuse that they didn't know. So we want to make sure there's plenty of training. And to your point, Ms. Rivera, and too, for school finance training, we are, you know, we work with internal audit to make sure that not, not only new folks, but we're doing a concerted effort to get our training throughout the year, too, because what happens is sometimes people come in new, well, we might do a training that first week or two, but then until they're really in the system, seeing what's going on, we, we felt it's important to do refresher training throughout the year as well, too. So this one speaks to the training for P-cards.
Can you give me just an, just an idea from your, the public, since I'm new on this, like, who would get a P-card, and like, what would be the max on that? I guess you have a threshold, right?
Yep.
Like, I don't know, $50, $100, this is what you get, and?
So the, the standard is 500 per transaction, and then $1,500 per month. And then one of the other corrective actions that we did was, this gets looked at each, each year, whoever has a P-card is reapplying, and we're looking at that. That's one of the, the things that wasn't done, you know, as, as well it should have been in the past. We let those balances kind of, or the, the maximums or the, the limits kind of roll from one year to the next, so we, we just stopped that. Everybody starts fresh at this 500 and 1,500. Now, within that first week of the, the new year, there'll be requests sent in to procurement and controller, and we're looking at that, you know, within these two departments to see that if that increase is justified or warranted. Some cases it is, some people will use that P-card in different departments, but we want to make sure that, that they're requesting that, and then that we're monitoring that. So, so in other words, if somebody had a $20,000 limit from the prior year, they're going to have to request that in the current year, and they're going to have to give a reason why that they would need that.
And is there a limit, or how many people get P-cards at a, at a school base? Is that like, do you have?
I don't know if we have a limit per school, but the, the number of P-cards out there has gone down dramatically, so it is something that we're paying attention to, too. One of the things that comes up, and as Ms. Tull mentioned, that the principal is the financial, you know, person at the school, but sometimes if, if the principal has a P- But sometimes if the principal has a P-card, there's an issue with our workflow for approvals. So the approval will come to the central office. So we often recommend that it would be the secretary within the school that would have P-card, that had the P-card in their name, and then the principal would be the approver. That works out better for, you know, making things kind of flow.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, yep. So P-card suspension will also happen if transactions aren't approved by the supervisors in a timely manner. So that timely manner is actually 10 days. And our, the way our system works is these approvals happen after the fact. So the supervisor goes in, runs a report, sees what was put on that card, and then has to make that approval within 10 days. So that's another thing that we are looking at. And then, as mentioned, the P-cards do have a lower annual and per-purchase limit, and then that's examined on an annual basis. And then deviations will be examined and documented, as I mentioned, with the procurement division and controller division, to see if there is a deviation. Sometimes there's a need for a temporary deviation if somebody's going on a conference or something like that, and that $500 transaction limit is not going to suffice. So that deviation is normally going to be a three-week to a one-month at maximum temporary change or deviation.
Just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you just give an idea how many P-cards we currently have out there that are active, and how many suspensions we had last year?
I think the suspensions were only a couple, but, Susan, here, P-cards were about 2,000 But suspensions, you know, there's not that many because, as I said, we take that action of calling the person with the P-card just to let them know. Document imaging will be required for record-keeping. This is something, it's mainly for the non-local travel. So we have a P-card for, you know, regular purchases, and then we also have a card for non-local travel. This one, we are mandating documented imaging for backup. But we realize that not all P-card holders have that ability, so it's a little misleading there, but it's required for non-local travel. And then the last one is increased frequency of the desk audit and review process. So as Ms. Bergstetter said, she does do P-card audits of departments, but internally, within the controller's office, we're also doing quarterly reviews as well, too. And then we'll just run reports to see if there's any extraordinary amounts that are out of the ordinary. So that's how we kind of do those. Those are the corrective actions that we've addressed for P-cards. And then I was going to, if there's no questions on P-card, I was going to.
One last question.
Yeah, sure.
Promise. And are P-cards only to be used by school personnel, or is it also central office?
The central office uses them as well, too.
I was looking at the 2,000, I'm like, we have 211 schools now? That's exciting. And 2,000 cards, so I'm just, that was my question, that it's not just for principals or it's for everybody in the system?
Right. Yeah, that small purchase, you know, that's what we recommend for small purchases, and that's going to occur throughout the system. And then what we do, too, we didn't mention here, but if there's no activity on our card, we'll take that card away for the next year. So the number I mentioned, that's actually going to be reducing if we don't see that card being used, because there's no sense in having a card out there if nobody's going to use it.
And the different departments, like transportation gets P-cards and utilities, maintenance folks, I would imagine that would be very useful, right? And, okay.
And the maintenance ones are ones that we would allow for temporary increased amounts.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the questions.
No, not the good questions, yeah. So in the next slide, we're going to talk about the audit recommendations and corrective actions related to the seven non-IT findings that were in the report. So the first one is procurement processes related to intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreements. That's a long, they call them ICPAs or bridges, so if we're going to bridge a contract. One of the things that came up in the audit was the, you know, we were bridging contracts, not necessarily with LEAs that were our size. So there's a couple of things that they look for, and what we've done as corrective action is we created a checklist. So anytime we do a bridge, our procurement department's making sure that we meet all this criteria. So one of the things is find an LEA of an equivalent size. The other thing is to make sure that whatever pricing that we were basing it on that's in the contract we're bridging, that we are getting that equivalent pricing as well, too. So those are two examples of things that, you know, we can improve on. Just to let you know, too, the, one, two, three, four. The first, actually all the items, when they did these, it wasn't like they found, there was a finding, like, hey, in this case, you did this. These are just things that they looked at our processes and found that these are things that we can do to improve it. So maybe the last one, when I get to the last one, that was something specific. But the other ones, there's no related actual findings that they said, you know, in this case, you did this wrong.
Just a question for me, with the bridge contracts, and we see those all the time on consent items, what is the issue regarding LEAs of similar size? Because in Maryland, there's not really. I mean, we could go to Fairfax in Virginia or something, but.
Yeah, we can definitely do, yeah, I said LEAs, but I meant school districts of our size across the country. So we can bridge other school districts. It's just.
And what's the concern about similar size?
Well, I'll give you a preview on the last one. For the school bus camera bid, that was a bridge. We bridged with a smaller, I think it was a small school district in Louisiana, and they found an issue with that, that we really should have been looking for a bridge with a.
Bigger school.
A bigger school district. The problem with that is kind of, we were, like a lot of things in MCPS, we're kind of on cutting edge for areas. So that was a tri-party agreement. I think that might have been the only other district or few of the districts that were doing that at that time. Now, you know, now it's more prevalent, but sometimes when we're kind of the first one or one of the first ones, it's hard to find equivalent-sized folks that are doing what we want to do. And that ended up, you know, the school bus camera project, you know, enabled us to get cameras in and out of all the buses and all through this agreement. So it's something that, so we are going to rebid that contract. I think it comes up next year. So you'll look in our corrective action, I think we had said January 2023, but the contract actually ends sometime next year. So we would be bidding that again and using our checklist this time, so as a corrective Next one would be independent reviews of HR payroll changes. So one of the things that legislative orders found was they looked at how we take a person that's hired and how we go through that flow of the process to what their paycheck is. So there's a lot of steps involved, and it involves HR as well as our ERSC department. So even though we do have controls there, they thought we could improve those controls by looking at, to make sure that, because part of HR's role is to put that salary in there. ERSC, when it comes to ERSC, that, they do review it, but we wanted to have some stopcaps in there. So any change in salary above $10,000, for instance, automatically gets flagged, and we look at that. The, I guess the issue is that ERSC can't look at every payroll transaction, especially, I mean, not every, we do do the payroll, but any HR transaction during hiring season, it's hard to look at them all. So they'll run specific reports and look at what, you know, look at the outliers, basically. But we've documented what we do to make sure that we do an independent review of that. So that was the corrective action we do there. As for number three, state procurement laws related to construction-related procurements, this was something they, they wanted us, again, they didn't find anything inappropriate. They just thought we should properly, more properly document the submission process and the evaluation process and our fee negotiation process. So when they asked for, hey, what are your standard operating procedures for that? We didn't have that documented, so that's since been corrected as well. Same thing with the next one, proper documentation for construction project inspection. So I believe the documentation we did have did say that we would do daily inspections, but, you know, talking to Mr. Adams, we, there's really not a need, in some cases, to do daily inspections. So we've adjusted our documentation as well there, to make sure that what we say we're going to do, we're really going to do.
So you don't have to clarify on that? So documentation is for us, not for the construction, for the people we hired?
Yeah, the people we hire are under contract, right? What they're talking about is what we do to monitor that.
And that includes the people who we go into agreement with and they, because a lot of them subcontract. So does that have, Seth is looking at me like, you know what I'm going with this, Seth? I'm trying to figure out how is that, because a lot of, a lot of the folks, and I know the county had issues with this, too, that they contracted with, they did a lot of subcontracting with folks that did not have the proper licensing.
Background check.
And, yeah, exactly. And since we are on a, on school grounds or we're doing stuff on school properties, I guess there's some safeguards that we need to ensure we have, so I just.
Yeah, so the safeguards around contracting, subcontracting, they are all there. This particular finding, what they looked at is our processes that are published on the website, and it said that we, MCPS staff, do daily inspections. And as Mr. Riley said, there's activities that happen on construction projects that many times don't require us to.
Be there daily.
Be there daily. And that was one of their findings.
Give us an example of one that we.
So if there's a project that's in infancy stages and they're doing site work, you know, we may, we may stop in on a Monday to see the progress and then hit milestones like Wednesday, Thursday, and then the following week. What they were looking for in their audit was every day from start to finish, a report from our staff documenting, you know, that they were there on site. And that just, that's not, A, required, it's not the best use of our limited staff's time. So we're updating what we publish on our web around our processes. That's really what this particular.
Okay, I misunderstood, sorry. I thought, but now that I'm, we do do what I asked, that we make sure that.
Oh, absolutely.
Because there's so many, okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, so next one, number five, it's improve our monitoring of our third-party healthcare claims processing services. What this relates to is, and we actually, this came, you know, we found this recommendation, we've already put it in place. So when we have our Cigna contract, that's what they're talking about, we've already built into that contract that we are going to be doing an audit of their claims processing. What that relates to is if there's a mistake and then we're entitled to a refund, you know, we'll get that. So it's them kind of making sure that we're, that they're following all the rules of the plan, basically. The last one, because we already discussed school camera, would be the MOU for the foundation. This one actually, where I would, we're not complete yet, we're about 95% complete. We had a retired, our previous executive director for the foundation retired, so we're actually taking a look at, you know, we did take a look at what's in that MOU, and that's going to be signed very soon. So we're, that's where we're at with that one, so.
Can you follow, I'd like a little more information about that. The Education Foundation is a separate entity, it's a nonprofit. Why is MCPS putting together the roles and responsibilities of the executive director? Shouldn't that be for the board to do? I mean, their board to do?
I mean, being done in conjunction. So some of the things are things that had to be talked about by both parties, such as kind of the shared services. So we were talking about, like, the accounting portion of that, you know, falls under us. There are certain aspects that are inclined services that have to be, that have to be talked about. But you're right, the board is a key part of that as well, too.
A nonprofit?
Yeah, it's a nonprofit, it's 501(c)(3). The Education Foundation is, and so people can donate money to it for scholarships or grants, and it's tax deductible for them. But I just was curious, when you're talking about the MOU, though, because technically, other than some shared services, MCPS has nothing to do with the Education Foundation, correct?
Yeah, they have their own separate board.
Right, with their own board president and all of that.
Correct, yeah.
Just clarifying, because there's been concern about why their new executive director's description hasn't been put out there yet so that we can have a permanent executive director. And I was concerned that MCPS was trying to involve, be involved in that process where they're not supposed to be.
And some of that, there is kind of a fine line. When we say shared services, you know, we're getting a benefit from the Educational Foundation.
So this was talking about that they're doing an audit.
Oh, this is talking about the agreement we have with the foundation. So it did come up in the audit. The legislative order said that, hey, you guys need something in writing, which we didn't, which we don't actually at this time right now.
We did. Oh, there's never been an MOU?
No, because they're not, MCPS is not, does not have oversight, like, we have, the Ed Foundation has its own board. So point being, they've kind of done, like, given us a favor as letting us use an office space in the, in central office, for example, just one, right. But I guess there should be an MOU for that as long as it doesn't involve anything where it's not approved by the board of the Ed Foundation as opposed to MCPS.
Good point, yeah.
Got you, okay.
So that should do it for legislative audit. I don't know if there's any follow-up questions or wrap-ups to the wrap-up.
Yeah.
I learned a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. And so now, I think, next thing, we're moving on to our operating budget update. And I guess one of the things that we've all say lately is our budget season never stops.
Correct.
Never stops. And so, and I know the board is starting to have our FY '25 operating budget work sessions in just a couple of weeks. So, I know. And so, and we did have a bumpy budget season this past year with the expanded county council and more than half those council members being new. But not to say that they didn't raise some issues that are of rather germane concern throughout the community, but how do we make a budget of our size and complexity digestible for the taxpayers who fund it, realizing that people come to our budget wanting to understand different things and wanting different levels of understanding. So some people out there are budget kind of nerds, and they really want to get into the weeds on things, but that's not most people. Most people have more of an interest that goes to, this is a program that I care about, where do I find it here? How do I know that it's still there? Or how do I see that the board is exercising its oversight role in monitoring and evaluating programs and deciding, you know, when to pull the plug? That's not giving us the best value for our dollars or given our limited dollars. This is, X is a better use of those than Y. And they want, and people that want to see how that is being represented in the budget information that we share publicly. So we're going to be talking a little bit about how we are looking to adapt some of our communication processes to some of the issues that were raised this past cycle, and also adding kind of a more narrative component to some of our budget work, so people can understand, the non-budget nerd out there can understand what this means and where it goes, where that money is actually going. So anyway, that's just a little preamble, so we will get started. Just sort of a little bit of a preview, coming attractions.
Thanks, Ms. Harris. And next slide, please. So we might start off with some of the nerdy stuff, so we wanted to just kind of give a baseline of, as you guys know, we do, we put our budget, we develop our budget using a couple of different parameters. One of them is our chapters, which we'll be hearing about it in the work sessions, the different chapter, people will come up and describe what's in their budget, what's added, what's taken away. But we also do it by category, so kind of fits in, this morning, well, not, a little while ago, we were talking about fixed charges. As you can see, fixed charges is one of our state categories, one of the 14 categories, instructional salaries being the largest, and special education being number three. And our total expenditures for FY '24 is the $3.2 billion that we talk about. So these are our category, categorical splits. Next slide.
And just so, I mean, just as you're talking, sort of weaving in some of the criticism that some have lobbied, has gone to practices, I mean, the 14 categories, that's, those are.
State mandated.
State mandated.
Correct.
And so individuals have said that they're not adequate to actually provide the level of transparency that our funders and taxpayers need. And so, but just being clear, the 14 categories aren't MCPS categories, they're state mandated categories. And how we work within that to provide information in the most transparent, digestible way, I think is what, despite what some. think is what, despite what some say about new, you know, the state, the delegation taking action to require additional steps for school systems in their, to follow in reporting and creating their budgets, that may or may not be something that comes out of the FY, in the 2024 legislative general session. But just for now, as we're talking about this, kind of thinking through your process of consideration when it comes to responding to criticisms that these 14 state mandated budget categories are inadequate, insufficient, lacking in clarity, transparency, because those are things that we've all been hearing.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. And, you know, from my understanding, the reason these categories were set up was to make it easier for the state and for others to compare LEAs, you know, wherever they're spending in each category. But is that still relevant? You know, is this an archaic way of splitting the budget? But it is something that we're mandated to do. So we do this, and then we develop the categorical budget by, I mean, our chapter budget, right, which is based on our organizational chart. But then, we'll be talking about that a little later, and we've been talking about it here at the board table, too, that we're also developing the program budget, which might more closely align with how folks think about, you know, programs and the budget. And as was mentioned before, it creates a good way to kind of look at these programs on a year-to-year basis, how much are we spending on them? Are they effective? This year, it'll be in the first year, we're going to just have a base, but as the years go on, we'll be able to compare what was spent, what changed in the budget, what does it look like for actuals? So it's going to be more useful going on, but that's just another way that we're going to slice and dice the same numbers, basically, so. And then talking about slice and dice, and the next slide kind of shows, we kind of separated by schools, what's spent in schools, and then what's spent for district-provided services. So if you do notice, it says their fixed cost, 1%. What we did for this exercise in this presentation is we distributed the benefits. So normally, the fixed charges, category 12, is that second biggest. But to make it a more accurate picture, we took it out of fixed charges and we distributed it. So this is what it looks like for what we spend on schools, and then what we spend in the district to provide services. So the next slide will, out of that 612 million, the next slide shows you the breakout for that amount. So, you know, again, this is kind of organizational, but it gives you an idea of what each of the budgets in each of our offices or departments.
Does that mean district leadership?
That is executive leadership, like what's spent for executives. You can see finance is the second lowest, so I'm going to try to do something about that in the next budget cycle. Next slide. So this is a slide, we did present this towards the end of last year as well, too. But just as a budget update, things didn't change too much on this. So just as a recap, employee compensation, we did negotiate two- to three-year deals with our association, so we have a good handle of what that is going to be on a year-to-year increase. So it's going to be $110 million that we have to add to the budget. Enrollment, we were projecting an increase that means that we're going to have to add more teachers, which equates to about $20 million. Inflation, we're still seeing, we're not seeing any decrease in inflation, so we've assumed $10 million there. And then, new blueprint items that are coming forth in this fiscal year is the $17 million. And then finally, the subject of ESR program costs to move to the operating budget. We have $40 million here, and I think the next slide might explain it a little better. So if you recall, to balance last year's budget, we moved items from operating to ESR on a temporary basis to the tune of $29.3 million. These are the exact items that are in there. So when we're talking about bringing things back to the operating budget in our discussions, these are the items we're talking about. 42 FTEs. One of the things that we had said when we did ESR was we were trying to be cognizant about not putting recurrent items in that, but to balance the budget, this is kind of what we had to do at the end of the year, so. So that's that. And then the next slide shows items that are in ESR. So if you notice, we estimated $40 million bringing ESR to operating. So there were 29 that we put over, there's the additional $10 million, we were talking about these items, so social workers, restorative justice specialists, the ASAs, and then senswear maintenance support. These are items that are in ESR that would be considerations for moving back to the operating budget.
Can you go back one slide?
I'm sorry?
Can you go back one slide?
Sure. Can we go back one slide?
These four you want to put back, but what about the parent community coordinator decisions?
Yeah, I mean, these will be part of the discussions, but the attention or the recommendation would be to put these back in operating funding, assuming funding.
The difference between the two slides is this is what was moved over last year. The other slide had been previously funded through ESR. So they're all on ESR, and they're all things that we want to move back to the operating budget.
And we want to move all this back. Thank you, sorry, next slide.
Next slide, and next slide. So as Ms. Harris mentioned, one of the things that we're, I mean, this is an example, we want to be as transparent as we can with the whole budget cycle, as well as, you know, every step along the way. So these are some of the different communications, or enhanced communications, that we're going to be doing in this fiscal year. One of them, as we've been mentioning, is this program budget. And we say, following the release of the superintendent's budget, so it'll be shortly after, the issue is that we have to have a, we have to tie in total, we don't want any redundancies. So whatever the superintendent's budget is, that's what the program budget's going to reflect. And right now, we have the departments and the divisions working diligently to determine, part of the exercise is, you know, when you're talking about programs, that might cross different departments and divisions. So we have to look at, in each of those different departments and divisions, what programs does each person work on? And that's how the program budget gets developed. So that's the process we're going through now, simultaneous with developing the operating budget. The next thing is community forums. We did three last year, we wanted to do more this year, just to get more input from the community, and use it as a source of transparency as well, too, just to hear more from the community. And if there's any questions on, or under misunderstandings about how we create the budget, we can be clear on that as well. The next thing is something that we're bringing back, the program budget, we actually are bringing back, but also, too, this economic impact study. So just to give you an update on that, we did a study back in 2016. And what that does is, it looks at the expenditures from us, from the school district, for staffing, for our capital as well, too. And then we also look at our FTEs, our staff. Where are they living? If they're living in Montgomery County, if they're living in the state, or if they're living in out-of-state. So what this study does, it shows, for instance, for every dollar that we invest in, and the county invests in MCPS, it's going to equate to X dollars of economic activity within the county and within the state, too, because we have that data. We know where our folks live, we know where our vendors are, so that's going to be, you know, another tool that we can use to communicate our budget and the effects of it. The next thing is an updated Budget 101 website. So, you know, since COVID, we haven't updated it fully, there's a lot of great information on there. I am being told that not everybody goes to websites, that there's different forms of communication out, but we do want to have updated data on there. So the folks that do want to go to the website, will have all the information on there. There's great videos on there that talks about our staffing models, everything that I'm talking about now, budget development, that's on there as well, too. But I guess a newer version then would be the next item, which would be, and this is, would be brand-new, a budget dashboard, and we want to have that by the end of FY '24. But this is similar to the discussion about the academic dashboard, where you could go to different schools and see the investment in different academics, the evaluations, and the different programs within schools. This will offer the opportunity to look at our budget in a little more detail than what, you know, just looking at our budget book is going to provide. We're actually going to engage the budget advisory committee to help us kind of see what they want, because that's a group of our stakeholders and community members, to see what would be the most beneficial to put on that dashboard. And then the last thing is student-based budgeting pilot. So this is something, actually, along with the program budget, that came out of our anti-racist audit recommendations for ease of equity of access. And what that's going to do is, student-based budgeting, a few of the other LEAs in Maryland do that, what it does is, it provides a little more autonomy for the principals with regards to staffing and use of resources. So there'll be guardrails, so, you know, we'll still have, you know, our formulas, and we'll still have things that the principals would have to abide by, but it gives them a little more flexibility to move their resources to where that student need might be, specific to their school. So we look at this as another good, but again, we're going to have to communicate that to folks, because it's going to be something a little different, and we're starting off as a pilot. So some folks might be like, hey, how come we're doing it in this school and not in my school? So another opportunity for communication and to look at how we distribute our resources. So that's the new communications that we'll be seeing this year, so.
And just, so the student-based budgeting pilot, how many schools?
It's going to be, we think within a cluster of about seven to eight schools, maybe 10, but I think we're in the seven to eight range.
And have those schools been?
Not yet, we're kind of in the process of doing that now. We're one or two meetings away from finalizing that, yeah.
For the student-based budget?
Pilot, yeah. And you said you're looking to do seven to 10 schools in that?
Yeah, that's, that we think is feasible in this pilot.
And that, we'll talk a lot more about that as we move down the road, but that is another tool, another way of budgeting that is, was recommended first in the anti-racist audit, because it is a way of targeting schools with higher need to make sure that they're receiving the resources that they need.
How are we currently doing that?
We currently spend a significant hundreds of millions of dollars to make sure that we have lower class sizes at all of our Title I schools. And so that is a major investment, having those 18:1 class sizes at our schools. Obviously, schools that have more English language learners receive more EL teachers, schools that have more students receiving special education services obviously receive more paraeducators and special education teachers. So we already are differentiating, and the study that ERS did back in 2000, thank you, 2016-ish, before COVID anyways, really showed the differentiating that we do, especially at the elementary level. And actually, one of the things that they said to me recently was that we already differentiate our resources more than almost any other school district they had seen. But we, this will be a way to make sure that it's incredibly, very transparent, and so that everybody can see how, where, and why the resources are being allocated. And if we could.
I always assumed our budgets are student-based, so that's why I was surprised when I saw that.
Well, they are, that's just a name of, you know, this other type of budgeting. But yes, I mean, everything is based on formulas, based on the number of students, and then the needs, the specific needs of the students.
And to some extent, the blueprint speaks about that as well, too, because I sent a survey out to all the other CFOs, and they're like, hey, yeah, we're doing it through blueprint, but, you know, this is a little different, what we're talking about here. But there's an aspect of student-based within blueprint as well, too.
And could we just, could we go back a few slides to the slide that had the different categories on it? Yep, this one. So what we're trying to show here is, the previous slide showed the whole $3.2 billion budget. 80% of that is directly in the schools, so this is the remaining 20%-ish, which comes out to be a little over $600 million. And then just how that 612 million that is not in the school budgets is allocated. So obviously, transportation is a big one, that includes the purchase of our, or the purchase of our diesel buses, the leasing of our electric buses. But then you can see the other categories, you know, maintenance, technology, utilities, facilities management, so these are obviously all critical functions of the school system. And so the idea here is to just show, you know, people ask, how can you not have additional money when you've got $3.2 billion? Well, because we're the 14th-largest school system in the country, and, you know, these are all things that are functions that school systems have to do. And so every dollar in our budget is accounted for and is, you know, strategically budgeted. And this is just an attempt to, at a high level, kind of break it down by the different departments as far as where those dollars are allocated.
I had a question about the other category, which is almost $27 million. And thanks for clarifying that, because it says provided services breakdown, so these are the services, the transportation, the food, the maintenance, all of that, right? So could you talk to that other, what other means, what other is?
So other is a combination of communication, labor relations, our division of partnerships, items that were kind of below the threshold there, but in combination, they come up to that amount.
And in that category, what's the highest ticket item in that $26.9? Is it labor? Is it communications? Like, what's?
Let me get back to you on that, because I don't have that breakout within the other, but I can.
I would really like a breakdown of that.
Yeah.
So I could understand better what it is. And then on the leadership, no, what was that? District leadership. Okay. I will also like a breakdown on that and understanding what that means. Because this is not, is this for principals? Like, is that, or what kind of leadership are we talking about?
Outside of the school building?
It'd be central office leadership, yeah, because principals would be on the, would be part of the schools.
Oh, so this is solely for central offices, for the people from central offices?
Well, not just, I mean, central office, transportation, human resources, I mean, all of the, you know, kind of centralized functions, not just the people in Carver.
But is, so you had mentioned human resources and transportation, for example. Are the leadership roles for transportation and human resources in district leadership, or are they in human resources and transportation?
I can give you that breakout, because I think that the top leadership would be in leadership, but everywhere else, everybody else would be in transportation, but I'll provide that breakout.
I'm just trying to understand the breakdowns and the differences, those are pretty, those two kind of caught my eye of just.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, because those are the types of questions we want to ask, because as we share this information with the public, we want them to have this full understanding of where our budget is allocated.
And the transportation, you said, is also the leasing of the electrical buses?
Correct.
That's already in there?
Yes.
Did we get the 100 buses yet? I know it's not part of the. That's in November, but I just, I know we've been waiting for them, that we're supposed to get there a couple of months ago, so.
We have received a few, and we had a meeting with our partners just last Friday, where we discussed the urgency of them delivering the rest of these buses.
How many do we have total?
Of the electric. So we.
Whether they're here or not.
So there was 120 in the first order that are currently on the road and transporting students. Of the 120 that were supposed to arrive in this past August, we have only received 20 so far.
Is that supply chain issues?
That is, yes, that's a big part of it.
Have we put that money out already without having the product?
No, 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 we pay once we receive the delivery of the vehicles.
I just think it's putting, it's putting a strain on the transportation department, because we do have one of the largest transportation departments in the state.
So, but it's not that we have 100 fewer buses than we need, it's just that we're keeping other buses that were going to be replaced on the road longer, because we haven't gotten those, what we expected to have delivered.
Correct. We were forced to extend the life of several buses in order to maintain the fleet that we need. And so we do that, you know, through the state of Maryland. And you're allowed to do that up to three times, but we don't want to be in a position where we have to ever do that again.
Because I know we have had quite a few that broke down the first couple of weeks of school, and the backups were minimal. I drove, not I drove one, I rode in one, with no, you know, and it was, and it was like, it was just praying to St. Jude to get to the next stop, so I think that's important that we get, we get them in.
Yeah, I absolutely agree.
Keep us to date on that, Brian, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about that section? Okay, we are moving on to our next item. We are in item seven, which gets to our operational excellence work. And first thing on there is the Cigna update.
Super excited for this one.
And I'm just going to do, we don't have a PowerPoint for this, but I just want to update us on a couple of things. I want to update us on, from a dollar perspective, where we're at, and then from a service perspective. So from the dollar perspective, when we did switch from CARE First to Cigna, we had talked about $11 million of savings. That is coming to fruition, but I just want to explain it. So the $5 million. So the $5 million is admin fees, and that came right off the top. Like we're seeing, like we used to get a monthly charge for admin fee, which we haven't since January. The other piece is the claims piece. And you'll see, because open enrollment starts soon now, there was an increase in active costs of 9.2%. So we were talking about how we budgeted before. So we did budget for some portion of that, but not for that whole thing. That was a little unexpected, the 9.2 increase. But to compare, we also looked at, or we asked the question, what would it have been if we stuck with Care First? And there, it would have been 12 to 14%. So in other words, we're still getting that other half of the savings, but it's going to be recognized in lower increases rather than, you know, a decrease in rate. Because decrease in rate, you know, in these, it's not going to happen. You know, we're always going to see an increase, but it was a lower increase than that we would have had. So that's kind of from a big picture perspective. Just to give you an idea on a per-employee perspective, so folks that are in our point-of-service plan, which the, that's the one where MCPS pays 83% and then staff pays 17%, they're going to see a $5 to $14 increase in their, a decrease in their paycheck, I'm sorry, in each paycheck. But then just as a comparison purposes, and I think you know this, a teacher that's going from first year to second year, they're actually seeing right around $300 increase in their paycheck. So relatively, because I know this came up last year, people like, hey, we got a 7% increase, but now you're giving us a 9% increase in health. It does, it's not apples to apples. So it's going to be $5 out of the $300 increase. And then for people in the HMO plan, where MCPS pays 88% and then staff pays 12%, that's a $2 to $7 per paycheck increase for, for the new rates for Cigna, for health. So just to give you an idea there. So that's the dollar perspective. From a service perspective, I know when we first changed over, we had a lot of folks that were concerned because their doctors weren't in our plan. So since January of '23, Cigna has actually added 840 mental health care providers to the network within Maryland. They've also added 2,100 providers and facilities in Maryland. So what it all comes out to is that 98% of all claims that we're seeing are within network, which is a good sign. Our first glance at this, we were saying it's going to be 95%. So that's where we were at before we converted. So now we're at 98% are within network. Just a couple of updates, too. There were emails that were sent out, a couple of vendors, Capital Digestive Care and then Privia. We did work for their contract, through their contract renewal, so now they are within network as well, too. So just giving you an update on that, in case you've gotten emails on that.
So, so big picture, there were increased healthcare costs, as there pretty much always are annually, but the increase is, in cost was lower than it would have been if we'd stayed with Care First.
Correct, yeah.
So there was a moderating effect on the annual rate increase.
That's right.
And we now, with Cigna, have more claims in network than we did with Care First.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Seems like a win-win.
Do we do any kind of routine customer service type of surveys for our employees as to how much more difficult they're finding some of the things to get approved or whatever?
We do, and the company does as well, but we're actually currently working with our three association partners to develop, co-develop a survey to send out to all of, all of our staff to just get their feedback on how it's been going. You know, anytime you do a transition, it's always rocky at the beginning, and so there's some of that, but we really want to hear from people to know, you know, is this working for you? And if not, then we'll have things that we can take directly back to Aon and to Cigna to say, this is what we're hearing from our folks and you need to, you need to do better.
Great.
Because we can see that they will do, they will do actions to kind of improve that, so.
Okay. I'll take the survey.
So next thing is our energy savings performance contract work. Gets to the work that we're trying to do according to our sustainability policy to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and hopefully sooner rather than later become a net zero school system. And I will let the new team that's joining us introduce themselves.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Sanate. I'm the Director of the Division of Sustainability and Compliance. And we're coming here with Susan Chen today because we really want to talk about the financial aspects of this program. As you mentioned, this is part of our overall strategy towards increasing sustainability within MCPS. So one of the previous meetings last spring, we talked about green schools and how we can change behavior at the schools. This project is how we can look at our infrastructure and our facilities and to make our facilities as efficient as possible. So we're going to, we're going to give you an overview of the program and Susan's going to talk a little bit about the financials, too. I can introduce Aldo Mazafaro. He is with our consultant, who is an owner's representative, and he's going to define exactly what that means. Aldo works for us and he's got our best interests and he's basically performing audits of this process as it goes along.
Thank you for having us today. We've been working with the district now for a little over a year. So it's been a long time coming. A lot of work has been put in, a lot of meetings and calls, working with your staff. It's been a big effort to get here, so credit to your staff for putting their, putting the time and resources in to get to this point, this exciting project. So we have a short presentation. I figure I'll jump right into it and feel free to jump in with questions as we go. But if you want to jump to the first slide, I believe there's an agenda there. I want to, first thing I want you to take away from this presentation is really we're meant to, this is meant to be informational only. This is a complex project. It's unlike anything you've really done before. So we like to do educational meetings like this upfront, let you answer questions, and there'll be follow-up meetings in the past when we're actually looking for formal recommendations or approvals. So the goal today is to give you an introduction to performance contracts, a little bit about my firm, NV5, who we are, what we do, why we're qualified to be your consultant for this project, talk about some of the benefits, the process, and then get a little bit more specific about what we've been doing to date, the results, and next steps. So, next slide, please. So what is a performance contract? This is something that's been done for 40-plus years across all levels of public agencies, from the federal government down to local school districts, local government agencies. Here in Maryland, it's established by a state law known as Title 12, which really lays out different rules and regulations for these performance contracts. Mostly, they apply to the state requirements. However, a lot of the best practices that are laid out in that law are carried over into how local government agencies do these projects. The biggest difference from your typical capital project is that this is turnkey. There's one sole contractor known as an energy services company, or an ESCO for short, E-S-C-O. If I use any acronyms, please jump in and ask a question. But really, if you read the law, you read the best practices of these projects. It's the way that it works is it's a partnership between a public agency and one of these companies, an ESCO for short, where that company will come in turnkey and audit all of your energy facilities, or all of your facilities. Look for energy savings, greenhouse gas savings, operational cost savings opportunities, develop a project scope. The district collaborates on that scope, selects what's in and out of the project based on ROIs, capital needs, things like that. And together, they move forward into the implementation stage where the total costs of the project are funded by what you're already paying to the utility budget today. So we call this kind of budget neutral or a self-funding concept in that instead of continuing to pay the utility every year, you know, a million dollars, for example, you're able to reduce that budget and reinvest those savings into your facilities to pay for things like HVAC units and unit ventilators that are very costly, but bundled together with temperature controls and LED lighting, you're able to create a self-funding project. So it's able to kind of do more with less on these projects.
And the consult, the consulting aspect of it, that's free, correct?
The consult, our services?
Mm-hmm.
So we've been working on a time and material basis until date, until today, but our project costs are typically bundled into the overall project as well. That's a solution we've been working together on.
So his contract was taken to the board by procurement back quite some time ago. And we're paying for his services at our sustainability capital budget.
Okay.
Next slide, please.
I've heard from companies. No, I just, I've had companies reach out that say they do it for free, so I was just curious about how this is all determined and established.
So I think what they mean is they mean budget neutral, right? They're able to find the savings and the energy to be able to pay the fees for the products and services that are delivered.
Okay. I thought they just did the analysis for free and then whatever projects they determine we'd have to pay for.
So the initial investment grade audit, which is the process we're going through right now, we started that probably about in February and we're still working on that right now. That per se is free, and then we're going to sign the energy services contract agreement to do the work. And so the initial review of it, we aren't paying for, correct?
Okay.
But the implementation, we will.
Who would pay?
Right.
Exactly, yes, because we have to buy the equipment, we have to hire the people, on green jobs, that kind of stuff.
So very quickly, a little bit about NV5. NV5 is a global engineering firm, does all sorts of major engineering work. I represent NV5's Clean Energy Group, and really what we specialize in is providing quality assurance, working for owners, mostly public agencies, to do these types of complex clean energy projects, as we call them. So that ranges from efficiency all the way to solar, renewables, microgrids, electric buses, you name it. We have subject matter experts in-house to kind of deploy to these projects as different scope comes up. We've been working with the district, like I said, for about a year. Really, the key team members for the district is myself. I'm in charge of business development with NV5. I'm a professionally licensed mechanical engineer. So I've been in this industry about 10 years, working primarily for school districts. I've been involved in about 70 or so energy performance contracts to date, working with all different types of companies and contractors across different states and, you know, really across the country. So we really see nationwide best practices, how they're deployed, and, you know, our goal is to bring those to our local clients to make sure that they're following best practices. So I want to be clear that we're not a contractor, we're not an ESCO, we don't work for ESCOs. We remain independent. As one of the members of our firm likes to say, he could have been working for ESCOs for years and retired on an island by now. But we really value, you know, the services that we provide helping agencies because these projects are so transformative and a great way to implement work when they're done correctly. And that's really where we come in to help you, you know, make sure that you're making the right decisions throughout. Question?
I was just looking at your map, and this is an in-the-weeds question, but I know that Salt Lake City Public Schools several years ago did a really intensive overhaul of their energy procurement practices and in a budget-neutral way transformed to 100% clean energy uses. And they, it was a, it was student advocate-driven project because of, you know, they have significant air quality issues in Salt Lake City. And I just see you've got Utah Blue, and I'm wondering if you all had any work with the Salt Lake City Public School System?
I believe part of our Clean Energy Group, another group that's based out of San Francisco, was actually a consultant to the prime contractor on that job. Not contractor, but the consultant on that job because they're really focused on solar best practices, the way we are with energy performance contracts. I think they were involved in that aspect, but I am somewhat familiar with their practices where I think it was a combination of efficiency, renewables onsite, and then purchasing through what's referred to as virtual power purchase agreements to make sure you're buying clean energy at the end of the day. So it's a real model for success, you know, of how things were done, so.
Thank you.
And what other school systems around here have you done this for?
So in Maryland, no school systems, but we are working for the state of Maryland. Actually, if you jump to the next slide, we have a few kind of notable clients that we work for. You read our mind. One more slide. There you go. So on the K-12 systems, we work for very large school districts all throughout the country. Clark County Schools around the Las Vegas area, it's the fourth largest school district behind Chicago, LA, and New York. They've been our client. We've done three or four phases of these projects over the last five to 10 years. We're currently working on a 200-plus school project to do LED lighting throughout. They have very different calculus for economics out there regarding savings and things like that because they pay such low electricity rates. But that's one of our prime clients. We've worked with Wade County Public Schools, that's the Raleigh-Durham area. I personally have worked with Philadelphia schools. I helped them kind of initiate their projects years ago, probably almost six or seven years ago at this point, but that program is, we got it off the ground and got best practices in place. I worked with Pittsburgh Schools, Boston Public Schools. Another large client of ours is Washington DC right now, their Department of General Services. So they haven't done these projects before, but we've been working with them to develop a pilot program. And underneath the DC Department of General Services is DC Public Schools, which is a 100-plus school district that we'll be doing a project on.
And you're doing Morgan State University?
Yes. We've been working with them for about two to three years, I want to say, on different task orders and reviewing their projects. So we're an on-call contractor to Maryland Clean Energy Center and the state of Maryland's Department of General Services, too.
Yeah, one of the things I'm looking at is I'm seeing some of the places that you're working with are locations that have the kind of diverse, diversity in the age of their infrastructure that we do. So we have, we're still operating schools that were built in 1936.
Yeah.
And schools that were built last year. And so, and everything in between. So having, and that's a challenge, is how you, different needs, how do you, how do you green up those buildings that weren't built to be greened, so.
That's a challenge, you know. I've worked primarily school districts, and that's endemic to school districts with four or five buildings and 200-plus buildings. They have a full wide portfolio of buildings with different needs, and that's why the performance contracting model works so well because you're not necessarily prescribing one-size-fits-all solution to every single school, right? The ESCO company, the energy services company, they're responsible for coming in and looking at that specific school, what their site needs are, opportunities are, you know, and developing a scope that makes sense there. So you can jump to the next slide, but we work not only local government agencies, our largest client is the federal government overseeing, you know, 200-plus million-dollar projects for air force bases in Japan and in Europe and all around the globe, really. So like I said, we take those best practices and bring them to our clients. So enough about NV5, but just to kind of wrap up some of the benefits of these projects, the most important thing is that we look at these projects as an improvement to the learning environment, exactly what you touched on. You know, there's varying ages of these buildings. COVID-19 shined a bright light on ventilation issues throughout schools all over the country. So despite the shutdown and things slowing down, these projects actually became much more popular during that time. I was dialing into virtual Board of Ed meetings all through COVID shutdown, developing these projects. So some of the main improvements are lighting, better lighting quality, consistent lighting quality, better temperature control. You know, if you can drive by schools, big old steam heating schools, not, not specific to the district here, but you see windows open, lights on at night because that's the only way to mitigate the temperatures, right? So the real goal of these projects is to put in good ventilation, bring that up to code, and control that ventilation and temperature control so that it's a better learning environment, consistent learning environment in the classrooms. It's laser-focused. This aligns directly with the board's policy on sustainability. So this is a, you know, again, credit to the staff here for looking at this as one of the first steps to achieving those goals, is you look at efficiency first, right? You don't want to go out and just paint the roofs with solar and put solar everywhere if you can save 20 to 30% of your energy use. So that solar can be right-sized in the future. So this is one of the first big steps to achieving those goals. Important concept here is that this is really a funding source for your needs, right? It gathers all the low-hanging fruit we talked about and funds those expensive unit ventilators and HVAC rooftop units and boilers and things like that that don't necessarily pay for themselves, but you need to replace the boiler to provide heat for the school, right, going forward. Same with unit ventilation and things like that. So it's a funding source to reduce future repairs on projects, to get that work done that you really are going to have to pay for one way or the other in the future. How these projects are going to feature curriculum enhancement, we like to call it, you know, engaging students, talking to them about what's happening in their buildings. I've done presentations with students of the final results and to Board of Educations over the years, you know, engaging them throughout the project so that they understand exactly- over the years, you know, engaging them throughout the projects so that they understand exactly what's going on, some education, curriculum-related programs like that. I mentioned self-funding, we'll talk about that on another slide or two. And again, comparing this back to the traditional capital project, this is a traditional low-bid capital project, I should say, is that the contractor, the ESCO, they have skin in the game, right, to implement this project. They're going to go identify savings opportunities, calculate costs, and come back with guaranteed fixed price to do the project and guaranteed annual savings back to the district to do that. That means through the implementation process, they aren't trying to take shortcuts, they want to build this project correctly and close it out correctly and do all the commissioning so that a year from now, when they close out construction, they're not, you know, there's a performance guarantee associated with it, so they need to come back and own what they did. And there's a lot of transparency and onus put on them to make sure they build this correctly. Next slide, please. I like to, this is a very simplified model, but I like to just use it to demonstrate the self-funding model and that, you know, for a given group of facilities, say you're paying a million dollars today. This isn't necessarily to scale, but you might estimate anywhere in the ballpark of like a 25% savings in these buildings, that's fairly typical for performance contracting. Instead of taking those savings, you're reinvesting those and paying for the project with those savings. So instead of continuing to pay the utility $1 million, you're now paying the utility $700,000, and that additional savings is now being redirected to pay for the new equipment that's generating those savings over time. So that's generally the model of how it works. This is a kind of a snapshot. If you jump to the next slide, there's another kind of more realistic outlook over, you know, this is a 15, sorry, a 20-year contracting term, so there is going to be escalation. We're living in an inflationary environment right now, so this kind of gives you a same concept, but it gives you a little better picture of exactly what's going to happen over time, where your existing budget will be after the project, before the project, if you never do the project. Any questions on these?
So you're saying we'll start to see savings after 20 years?
You start to see savings immediately upon implementation, but over time...
Once we've paid for everything, when it's just us, it's going to take 20 years before?
That's usually the model that it's built on, because you want to finance it over time, just like your traditional bonding projects, so that those payments are smaller each year to the bank and can be fully offset by the guaranteed savings of the project. Usually there is some balance built in there, a little bit of extra fluff in the annual savings, so that you do see, you know, a year-one benefit from things like rebates that come in or additional savings that accrue to the district's benefit.
And utility payment on the annual budget also pay, you get also new equipment, so really not savings start immediately, right now, a project going live, it's not 20 years. Otherwise, you pay utility plus equipment, now you use utility payment to pay the equipment.
Next slide, please.
So self-base.
So these performance contracts generally follow five main phases. There's preliminary planning phases, we're past that, we're past the request for proposals process. The district selected two energy services companies, Amaresco and Naresco, about a year ago, I want to say, is when probably moved into formally appointing them. And since then, we've been working on the investment-grade audit, which is really a detailed, site-specific process where they're surveying, they each have about 25 buildings. The list of buildings is included at the end of these slides, but the idea is this is when they're going and finding all that low-hanging fruit, identifying what needs to be done, and coming together and collaborating with the district team to build a project that makes sense for those 25 buildings. At the end of the IGA, they move into the implementation stage, sorry, IGA stands for investment-grade audit. The implementation stage generally is about 24 months, and then after that, it moves into the performance period, known as measurement and verification, where the ESCO is reporting back to the district on an annual basis that you get a report that says, hey, we installed X, Y, and Z, we measured, we took these measurements and verifications, here's the guaranteed savings that we were contractually obligated to, here's what resulted from what we installed. And then us, as your consultant, would typically review those reports and sign off on it being accurate and consistent with the contract. So usually, they do exceed the projects. I'd say about 95% of projects do. I've been involved in projects where there have been shortfalls, and frankly, those customers did additional phases of projects afterwards, because if there's a shortfall, the ESCO cuts them a check or makes them whole for that shortfall. And, you know, again, being your owner, your representative consultant on this, we help you with those negotiations, make sure that everything's done per the contract.
That's the guaranteed saving here.
Yep.
How did you guys pick the schools? What was the...
That's a great question.
The criteria for that?
We wanted to make sure we had representation of the whole school district for many reasons, equity number one, but number two, we knew we were going to do four phases of this, and we didn't want to front-load it with the first project taking up a lot of money and then not having other good schools to fund the other schools moving forward. So we created quite a detailed matrix where we looked at the size of the school, the level of the school, the age of the school, whether or not it had recently been constructed. If it was going to be constructed next year, we're not including it in the list right now because we don't want to put a whole bunch of money into a school that's going to be in construction soon. We also looked at the farm's rate, we looked at their energy utilization rates, we looked at their mechanical scores from the KFI surveys that we did a couple of years ago, and we put that all into a big matrix and ranked them, and then we picked what was representative of the school district. So we basically picked the top 50 based on that representation in the matrix. And we've got all three areas represented, we looked at geographic representation, we wanted to make sure we had approximately the same distribution of high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools as the whole district.
I noticed you have a lot of elementary schools, is that because they're older, the ones that you picked?
It's a percentage, it's a rough percentage, like we have 138 elementary schools.
And there's more of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely, yeah, okay, got you. Yeah, and I appreciate that, you know, we do, since we have such a diverse portfolio of buildings, we do want, we don't want to take all the, you know, ones that are 70 years old and having a lot of problems, or all the newer ones, you know, we want a nice spread, so.
For a large district like yours, generally, especially what we're considering on a first-phase project, we'd like to try to select a representative sample, is kind of the term we use, so that you can kind of extrapolate results and make decisions going forward on what the next blend of 50 buildings might look like, or, you know, what the balance of 200-plus buildings might look like.
And I don't see, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read them all, but like any of our, like the Blair Ewing or any of those, is RICO one of, is our own building? Or, no, right, state, but Blair Ewing is not.
Ewing is ours.
There's some others?
So there were some that were excluded if they had questionable occupancy patterns, because we wanted to make sure we had good baseline data, and others we're just going to get to in another phase. So I don't remember specifically where Blair Ewing fell into it, but it would eventually go through this process.
Got you, thank you.
Next slide, please. So we touched on this already, a little bit of activity to date, but like I said, we've been working for over a year with the district, they received those RFP submissions, we helped the district evaluate those submissions. We're not a voting member on the selection committee, we're purely a technical advisor. In June, you did pass your board policy on sustainability, this is one of those tools that are being used to achieve those goals. The two ESCOs proceed with that investment-grade audit, probably late 2022 into early 2023, and this fall, we're really expecting completion of the investment-grade audits with the two companies. So I've been working extensively with Susan, your legal staff, with Lynn, to kind of keep all the plates spinning on the project, because we do have our engineering team working with the facilities and capital planning department to select scope. In the meantime, there's also financial planning that needs to be done, there's legal negotiation that needs to be done. So our services aren't, they are engineering-based, they're technically, technical-based, but we really pride ourselves on supporting you on the kind of three legs of the performance contracting stool, is how we refer to it, where there's the legal, the financial, and the technical side, and they all tie together on the project. Next slide, please. So estimated results, again, this is informational only, I want to be clear that these, we're at about 60% completion of the investment-grade audits, is how we refer to it. So we have rough order of magnitude, cost, and savings for these projects, but again, in a couple of months, in November, we'll come back to you with much more refined numbers by school, by project, you know, much more detail. So we want to give you an order of magnitude here. Scope includes LED lighting, temperature controls, HVAC improvements, all the stuff we've been talking about, really. Like I said, this is a self-funded project annually by the guaranteed savings, about a 25% reduction in energy costs across these 50 sites. That translates to about 7,000 metric tons of CO2. That may not mean much to you, so we could probably quantify that in cars off the road or trees planted or things like that, but the preliminary financial results are over there on the, on the right in that chart, where you have your total project cost deducted by rebates and grants that are most likely going to come in from doing this project of about $5 million. Typically, it's in that 10% range. So that leaves you with your net total project cost, which is usually the amount that's financed over the term of 20 years, right? So that debt payment on the $45 million is then offset by the guaranteed savings in year one is about $3 million. And then I showed you earlier, you know, we are in this inflationary environment. Now that being said, you don't want to go and assume 10% escalation of energy costs over time, you want to be conservative, because it's really just a modeling factor. But using even just a conservative 3% escalation, those guaranteed savings over the life of this project at 20-year term is just about $80 million. So it's a real home run for the district to capture these savings, leverage them to pay for improvements to the learning environment, you know, over time, and get all this new equipment in the near future.
Questions?
Next slide, please. And I think we're just wrapping up here. So as the investment-grade audits, the IGA's come in, NV5's going to continue our detailed evaluation of those at the end, assuming it's all in line, and, you know, with everything we've discussed to date, we normally issue you some sort of an evaluation letter, letter of findings blessing the project. In parallel, we've been working on negotiating those terms and conditions to the Energy Services Agreement, that's the actual contract documents for the project. We'll be working with Susan and her team on the financial side, making decisions on financing strategies and timing and everything like that. And then, like I said, in November, we'll be back to present more final economics, seeking your approval or recommendation to move towards the Board of Education to request their approval to enter into the contracts. And upon approval, there'll be some signatures, and closing of financing and implementation will start most likely in Q1 of 2024, and that's about 24 months for two summer windows for a project of this size typically. So I think that's all we have. Just thank you again for the opportunity.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I mean, green schools are healthier schools. So the improvements you're making aren't just the right thing we need to do from a climate perspective, but they're also from a healthy, pleasant environment to be in. So I mean, I think the enhancements are multifactorial here. And I did question, and you alluded to this maybe a little bit, so one of the conversations we've been having is looking at funding, federal funding that might be available to systems like ours who are trying to do this work. So what's in the Inflation Reduction Act, what's, you know, there's EPA grants that have been out there, the Department of Energy has its zero-cost loan program, and is part of the work that your company is doing to look at those available programs and assess how MCPS might be able to take advantage of them?
Absolutely, yeah.
Because I have a group of students that would like to work with you on that.
That's great, happy to connect them.
Can I just have a quick question on the, and maybe this is all just looking at the structure and everything, but there is any component to looking at the school to bring the whole environmental issue to the students and to the staff? Because that is, you know, that is great, like if we could put solar panels and so on, but is there a component to involve the community into why this is necessary and also, you know, the importance of recycling, the importance of saving energy, the importance, is that part of, part of this at all?
There is, do you want to?
So definitely, as we roll these projects out, we can put the best technology in the school, but if the people are still opening all the windows and opening all the doors, we're not going to get the same purpose that we need, right? So definitely, there's definitely two pieces to this, there's the behavior aspect and the facilities, infrastructure aspect. We're also working on upgrading our utility payment system so that eventually we'll be able to have that real-time information available to the schools on exactly what consumption that they're having from their energy perspective, so they'll be able to get that feedback, right? But yeah, absolutely, and especially, I see this as a gigantic opportunity for secondary school students to learn about engineering, learn about environmental, green careers, yes, yes. And so we've had many discussions with the actual ESCO companies about that, too, and what kind of opportunities that we can engage them, because if we don't, we're not going to have the biggest bang for our buck.
Yeah, no, I think this is wonderful, but if we do not facilitate that conversation with the next generation, right, it's kind of, it's not being utilized, I think, in the best way, especially if it's an education building, we should be educating those in there. So who's going to do that piece, the ESCO people?
So it's a combination of both my staff as well as the ESCOs, because once they're out of the building, right, we'll have them work with them when they're in the building, but then that will continue too with our staff moving forward.
Because a lot of our schools are populated, especially when I'm looking at some of those schools, especially with the farm schools, some of them, you have, I can tell you, almost half of those schools, Spanish is going to be really important, to be able to have that information and that interaction with the community. And it's a community that really, really could use that information and that kind of education, so they could actually even do that at home.
We've actually had discussions with the parent academy, and we've partnered with the counties on different things that the PTAs can do, like sessions that they can have at night to educate parents about this exact kind of stuff at home, even if it's, you know, changing the light bulbs and the free programs that are available in Maryland residents that they can take advantage of.
Correct.
So yeah, it's, this is one piece of many, many, many different pieces in our sustainability program.
And you were in here when we were actually discussing PTAs earlier with another issue, but unfortunately, some of these schools don't even have PTAs, so it's really up to us and the folks who are bringing these programs to, you know, to do the best we can to bring that information to the communities that need it, so, thank you.
And I'd like, so we have created a Student Climate Action Council, and 14 members, but throughout the process of that selection process, we also have 200 climate ambassadors as of now, and that was just in our round one of, of, you know, reaching out to all the students who applied to be on the council and asked if they wanted to be part of the climate ambassador team to do projects, and through that, you know, we've done an edge of path with every one of the climate ambassadors and the council members, and we have a touch point in every one of our 211 schools with those students. They went there, they have a sibling there, if it's a new school, their science teacher's now teaching there, so we have a point of contact in every one of our 211 schools. How do we operationalize them, so you, you know, curriculum enhancement opportunities for students? This is a standing body inside the system that we've created to hold us accountable to our sustainability goals, in part. So how do we operationalize them to be part of this work? Because that's your touch point to every single school in the system, right, they're from students who are deeply invested, because for them, climate anxiety is real, and they are all in to make these changes. And I think the more that they can see and explain this work, we're going to be reducing anxiety among our students, our staff, our families, when they see that we are taking seriously our role as a steward for the next century. So how do we do that?
So like I said, there's, we can follow up with you on like specific descriptions of some of the programs, I think, that the ESCOs are going to be providing, but to your point, they call them climate warriors?
We do, that's what we call them. We have our next meeting on October 4th.
Okay.
With the Student Climate Action Council, and they're open meeting, so any, you know, we can publicize... we can publicize them. Any student who wants to participate, we're working on getting it livestreamed. But if you could be, or somebody from NV5 could come and share, that would be a great opportunity to really operationalize and deputize these students to be partners in this work, because they will overperform at every opportunity.
That's the goal with all of these projects, is, you know, kind of getting the occupants engaged, right? Not just on the training, but making them aware of what you're doing, right? What they could be doing at these facilities and other facilities that they live in on a daily basis, right? Schools, and you basically spend more time there than at home in some cases.
And these kids are already doing amazing stuff, so.
Right.
Okay, so I will reach out to you.
Absolutely. Happy to do that.
Awesome. Yeah, I love, I love this work. To me, I think it is, it shows our long view as a system, that we aren't just looking at, you know, what's happening right in front of us today, but we're also looking at how we are being, we are, we are, as a member of this community, looking to make sure that we are contributing to a better, cleaner future, instead of just the way, you know, just doing the same old stuff. Yeah, it's huge.
That's great. My contact info is in that presentation, so you can reach out to me directly.
All right, I will.
Page.
My contact info may not be in that version.
Find you. You can find him through me.
Find you. Yeah.
You have an office in Rockville, right?
We do. It's a small office, I think it's our geospatial services.
You guys out of Florida origin?
Yes, that's the headquarters. I'm based out of New York City, but we work. We have projects in Hawaii and Maine.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks for having us. Appreciate it.
All right, last thing, CIP.
Fun, fun stuff.
Just getting a little forecast, and also, and as I said, part of, I think, the overall theme for this committee this year, as we're moving through, was going to be a tough budget cycle, is no surprises. And so as we're looking at our CIP budget, we are continuing to see cost overruns, inflationary pressures, labor cost increases, which is making it harder for us to keep our projects where we want them to be. So this is just, I think, creating the environment that we're going to be, you know, sort of some expectations around the environment we're going to be in as we move into the FY25 budget.
No, I appreciate that, and I think just to segue off of that presentation, while we brought a consultant here today to talk about their engineering work, I just want to be very upfront with everyone that there is still significant capital cost associated with meeting those climate action goals. So it's not all going to be solved within the $80 million savings that we can save, and it's not, we're not going to achieve our HVAC and climate goals by this program alone. So I just, I just wanted to be clear, following that, you know, consultants usually come in and will definitely sell their work, which they should, but I just want to be realistic in what we are doing, and there's a significant effort that's going to be required within our capital programs to be able to meet those goals. And we obviously are very committed to that. To answer your questions about the CIP program, Capital Improvements Program, we, just to forecast, we will, superintendent's recommendation will be coming to the board at the end of October. That's when we start our presentations, we'll go through the hearings, public hearings, to just hear a lot of the concerns, you know, make sure we're focused on the right areas. I do believe this is going to be our on-year, if you recall, we have on-year, off-year, this is, this will be the on-year, meaning as a county, we're able to introduce new projects, we're able to introduce new programs, and we will have a greater emphasis on infrastructure. You know, as we've navigated the capacity, we've navigated some of, you know, new schools, just managing, you know, things like the Clarksburg growth, we now need to really focus on our infrastructure and to be able to meet the policy goals that have been set for. So you'll start to see, you know, maybe a shift in, in some of the funding aspects, you know, HVAC programs, roofing programs, maybe the introduction of new programs focused on extending the life of our buildings and extending the infrastructure. But you are correct, we are, we have some major projects that are going to be through the bidding process here. You know, Northwood High School, Crown High School, all of those projects will be, will be coming out. They will be, while we're tracking market conditions, we've done everything that we possibly can from a value engineering and from a cost control, we are still at the mercy of the market. And so we are watching those, we'll obviously be updating the board, and that will be a great influencer of our capital improvements program recommendations to you all, and I believe ultimately your requests to the county executive and ultimately the county council. But that's just a general update. We are, you know, really trying different, different approaches to gather as much feedback as we can going into this. You heard updates around, you know, how we're using our KFIs to influence Capital Improvements Program. You know, as recently as this week, you know, working with the student board member on, you know, just feedback around what's happening in schools around climate, you know, in terms of HVAC and comfort conditions, making sure, you know, that we are using our money very wisely as we're moving forward. And a lot of times, you'll hear from, from others that, you know, the county spends a lot of money on, on schools, and that we should be able to, you know, to do everything that we need. But, you know, over time, you can see that the, the share of revenues to the school, the share of bonds, the schools is going down. So now we're obviously in a place where we need to be very smart and be able to use our dollars for multiple purposes across the district. So you'll start to see more of that, you'll start to see more around, you know, different programs that are associated and tied to the blueprint, and how that will influence, you know, our work as a district around our infrastructure, and how that obviously then starts to connect much, much more, greater detail with our operating budget. So I know I can't get too far ahead of myself on the CIP, because we will have, you know, several presentations, but, you know, I do, I think it's very important to be realistic with what we're facing here. We're still continuing to see the inflationary pressures from, you know, post-COVID, they're not going away, even though there's sort of economics that say that they should sort of level off or go down. Haven't quite seen it yet, so we're hopeful at some point that will happen. And we're also seeing, you know, as you, as you heard earlier in the, in the meeting, some of the supply chain issues. You know, you probably receive emails about why are these things not being fixed? What you're not seeing is that there's 12-week lead times, 14-week lead times in order to get just small parts, and that's obviously very frustrating to us. So we have, we're developing different approaches to how can we, you know, just, how do we have supplies on hand to navigate, you know, these, these conditions and this sort of thing? So I'm very excited about this upcoming CIP. I'm very excited, not only for the CIP, but also how, you know, this work is becoming much more connected to the operating budget. Very excited to be able to present to you all, you know, really the full understanding of, you know, when we don't see things happen on the capital budget, particularly from a funding from the county or state, what does that mean to our operating? What does that mean to the maintenance side of things? What does that mean to the utility side? So you're really starting to see things all come together now, and we're obviously very excited to share that and be able to do, you know, that education with our communities about the importance of the capital improvements program as a whole. So hopefully, that's a good update, certainly, any questions?
Sounds good. You answered my one question.
Question I had was, we had some issues where we had to close a couple of schools early because of HVAC situation. How can we get ahead of that for next summer, in a sense, in this budget that is coming up? If you have these repeat offenders of schools that have been having issues with the HVAC, because interrupting a school day, you know, it not only puts, you know, a huge strain on the staff, but also parents who are working, who have to leave work, a lot of their are single parents, and they have to rush to go pick up their kids, or there's nobody home, because, especially with the elementary schools, right? So I just wanted to kind of throw that there, and just how we can kind of think.
That's a good question.
More proactively till next year, so we can prevent that from happening. I know HVAC systems are incredibly expensive, and I was surprised with some of the schools, they're not that old, in a sense, but, so is it a maintenance issue, you know? Is it, you know? So anyway, I just want to throw that out there, because I did get a lot of calls in my district.
And that actually is a very good question. You know, one that, you know, I think what we need to do a better job of is explaining, again, the importance of this work. The schools that were impacted, that were closed early during, during that heat wave, were projects that were on our HVAC replacement list for four years. And when, you know, we've seen a quadruple in cost, you know, projects that used to be $1 million to replace an HVAC system at an elementary school now costing close to $5 million, we've seen delays. And so for us, it's going to be really important to stress the importance of these, of these projects. And at the same time, we need to be very upfront around what are, what are the steps that we need to do? Those schools, temporary chillers, temporary, you know, equipment in order to work through these challenges will be necessary. So it is a great question, it's one that I think, again, as I, as I talk about all the intersection pieces here between the operating, the capital, and what are those impacts to our students, we're going to spend a lot of time talking about that this coming. It's not just going to be about, hey, $20 million for HVAC program, it's going to be specific schools and why they're important, and what are the implications of if we don't see funding? And obviously, what are those implications in terms of how do we get ahead of it, but what does in that take away from other schools? You know, we spend an immense amount of money resolving and trying to keep systems running that are already broken, that need to be replaced, and that takes away from other schools. It takes away our resources to be able to, you know, handle a new school that has maybe a minor tweak that needs to be adjusted. So it's just really going to be important for us to bring this as a full-picture approach, and why this is important.
Yeah. And just a couple of questions. So the KFIs, have we done another, have all the schools been reassessed for the key facility indicators?
Not all schools, but what we did when we first, when we first did the assessment, we did all schools. The state came on the heels and did also all schools, so that was just across the district and the state as a whole. What we did in this third round is take the top, the top schools that were sort of that next round that we needed to focus on, reassess them to make sure our priorities were still in line. So that information, and actually, you know, part of that assessment is an update in the delivery. So, you know, we started out with really what I would say is rudimentary, you know, this is the information, this is what your school represents. It's now transitioning into, you know, really much, much more robust sort of cause-and-effect type of approach, type of a website, where we can see, you know, what's happening at these schools, what are the implications, again, if we don't see funding for certain areas, sort of outlining what we need to do over the course of the next 10, 15 years to, from a funding perspective. So I am excited for that, and I hope that will be out probably right around the same time as our, as our CIP recommendations and presentation.
Okay. And, yeah, and I, I just, you know, you mentioned it earlier, people say, well, you guys have all this money for your CIP, why can't you just take care of everything? And I just, people forget that, you know, that schools are uniquely susceptible to issues of wear and tear because of the population they serve. Kids are hard on buildings. We all know that. You know, there is just, they do silly stuff, they're, they're active and, you know, all over the place, so they're just uniquely hard on systems and structures, and keeping them in good repair and safe is just, it is an ongoing, it is ongoing work. So, and then, just as, talking about no surprises, I think we need to be preparing the community for the fact that our projects going forward, you just, you just mentioned it, you know, it used to cost us $1 million to install new HVAC in an elementary school, now it's almost five. So our projects are going to be significantly more expensive, but they aren't going to look significantly different. So when we say, you know, bringing, say, the new Northwood across the finish line is going to cost X number of dollars, and then you compare it to how much we spent on a new Wheaton, and it's dramatically more, but it's not going to, I mean, we're not, you're not going to look at the new Northwood and the new Wheaton and say, oh, clearly you spent like almost twice as much money on that school. It's just a factor of the environment that we're operating in, and so just setting those expectations, it's just, it's just how much things cost right now.
Correct.
Wee, fun times. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Adams? Okay, the last item on our agenda is simply the board's expenditure report as an item of information. It's publicly available on the website. Is there any new business? Any other questions?
No, I think we're done.
All right, we will meet again on November 14th. It will be great, you're all going to want to be here. So, anyway, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.